Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 16th School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting. It's been a little bit since we've convened, so hopefully everybody's holidays, new year, everything was great. I know mine was, but now it's back to work. I'd like to pass it now to Ms. Spray for our invocation or shooting the district vision and then introducing Pastor Reiner for the invocation.
The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And we'd like to invite Pastor Sam Reiner from the West Bradenton Baptist Church, who is my pastor, to do the invocation. If you would all please stand with us.
Invite you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the incredible privilege of educating the children in this community. Lord, I pray that through the educational system, every child will be given an opportunity to thrive. I thank you for our teachers. I thank you for everyone who's in the classroom, and I thank you for this board. I ask that you give them wisdom as they make decisions on behalf of this community, and it's in your son's name, Jesus, that I pray. Amen.
And please stay standing for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Father for which His hands one nation under God, indivisible, with the refuge and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Move along to item number five, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the January 16th, 2024 Agenda, updated on January 12th, 2024, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
So moved.
I have a motion.
A second.
In a second. I'm not in Granicus, so let me.
Hang on, yeah.
We got a motion in a second for the approval of the agenda. I don't see it on here to vote. Does anyone else see it on the vote? Yep.
Yes.
And it's going to cast our votes. Passes.
I don't have it.
You may have to go back and then refresh. That's what I decided to do and join it. I think I was in it before it actually started.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
All right.
Yeah, join.
I vote yes.
So it passes five to zero. Item number six, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Good morning, chairman and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop on October 27th, 2023, the school board regular meeting on December 12th, 2023, and the school board workshop on December 15th, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second. Any comments on the minutes?
Just one.
Yeah.
We received an email, and I just want to make sure there is clarity in the minutes. And I think it went to the whole board. And it was just about on page, I pulled it up, page two. And it's talking about the Ready for Life, Preparing for Graduation, and it says Avid and ACE. And the author of the email wanted to know if ACE meant ACE or ACE meant AICE, because they are two different programs. And I just wanted to make sure that there was clarification that ACE is correct and it's not supposed to be AICE. Anybody can illuminate on that. My guess is it was AICE, because the ACE was Alternative Certification Education. And I don't believe that was the real discussion. I believe it was Advanced International Certificate of Excellence.
Yeah.
The ACE, AICE.
Correct.
So are you making a motion to amend?
I'm not making a motion. I'd like clarification on which one is intended. And I see Mrs. Forman looking back, so maybe she can help us clarify which one.
Oh, I'm looking at the.
Ready for Life.
It's Ready for Life?
Yes.
Okay.
An email talks about Mr. Chapman, sir. Could he illuminate that for us?
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Weisong, do you, anyone who?
I see this also went to you, Mr. Chapman, but it went, of course, at eight o'clock this morning, so I'm not sure you've had an opportunity to see it. Although you're, you're always getting emails.
Yeah, I believe it's ACE, AICE.
Okay, it is.
And we can make that correction. Well, you would have to.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem.
We can easily make that correction.
I have no, I have no problem amending my motion, but I just want to make sure that I'm amending it correctly.
AICE.
Okay. So then I'd like to just amend my motion to approve the minutes, but with the revision of on page two, it says Avid and ACE, AICE, as the spelling correction there.
Who was your seconder?
I believe.
Oh, but I didn't hit a button.
You accept her amendment to change it to AICE?
Okay. I just found it. All right, are you guys ready?
It's for the first one, October 27th.
Yeah, it's on page 26 of the, of the strategic plan. Handy thing to carry with you. And it's, it does say Ace Cambridge.
Okay, so it's AICE, which is my motion.
So I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Spray, you were allowed to speak as well?
Right. On the December, I believe it was the December 12th meeting, item eight, where we received a donation for a 2023 Lincoln Aviator in the amount of market value $78,000. I want the minutes to reflect that that donation came about because the vehicle was absolutely flooded beyond repair. That's not stated in the minutes, and I'd like that to be added, to say that it was a destroyed vehicle. That's why MTC got the donation to troubleshoot it and work on it, and that vehicle will not be plated and driven.
When they donate, they fill out a document about the, the vehicle.
Yeah, the document.
It's not in the minutes, but part of the board work, when they donate the vehicle, is they, they fill out a document about the vehicle.
And that document does not talk about it being flooded or.
No, I think it does say it's in new condition.
It does say new condition. It says new or used, and it says in new.
It says new.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say in here that it was flooded, so I just want the records to say that it was a flooded vehicle beyond repair for them to.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all. I, I got a couple of, you know, I had a few people ask me about that, and I'm like, wow.
Is that a motion to amend?
Motion to amend the minutes to add to that item that the vehicle was damaged by flooding, and that's why it was donated to us.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, we have all the amendments on, or do we want to vote for each individual, each individual amendment?
Well, mine, I added as my amendment, and the seconder approved it, but hers is a second, a separate motion.
Correct.
So I think we have to vote on her amendment and then vote on the total thing as it's amended.
Correct. Yeah.
Chair.
Yep.
I think you should take action on the First Amendment before you.
That's what I thought, too.
That's fine.
With regard to the second, the minutes should just reflect what was actually discussed at the meeting.
It was a consent item.
Right.
But, but they should still, you shouldn't add things that weren't discussed at that time.
Fair enough. All of them are on my second.
But it could be added to this, Ms. Spray's comments can be added in, in a different part of this agenda.
Minutes this meeting.
Yeah, of this meeting.
Okay. Okay. So we'll take away the, the amendment of your amendment, Ms. Spray, and let's vote on, we've already got two, a motion and a seconder for Ms. Messenger. Do you want us to just do that verbally?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment that was first discussed with Ms. Messenger on the clarification for ACE, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No carries five zero, the amendment? So now we can move to the approval of the agenda as amended?
No, minutes.
I mean, minutes. Excuse me.
So the discussion on mine will be just added as comments?
I think.
Through this meeting?
During your board comment, you can add that.
Okay. That's why I wouldn't, I wanted to make sure, is it during the approval of the minutes, or do I do that in a board comment?
I would just do it during your board comment.
Okay, that's fine. I'll bring it back up.
That'll be in the minutes of this meeting.
All right.
All right, so we approved the agenda to the minutes. Do we need to approve now the minutes as a whole?
Yes.
Do I need a?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion now to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
You have a second. You ready for that, Laura? All right, we can vote this one on Granicus. The actual approval of the minutes as agenda, as amended?
Sorry?
It's okay.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, no worries. All right, that passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is recognitions. Mr. Barber, come on up.
We've got some really special guests with us this morning. It's gonna take them a moment to get down here, but thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and Dr. Weisong. Just spread out across here. All right, as you all know, we're gonna be facing the board members. Yeah, right. As you know, the Good News page on the school district website is the home for, the place to go to get good news about our students, about our schools, and about special things that take place in this community related to our schools, and this is certainly one of those things. So we're happy to let you know about this. But the annual migrant tea has become a time-honored tradition in our community, and it occurs annually right before the winter holidays, and it's a special collaboration between the school district and the Manatee Church Women United, a cross-denominational group that represents more than 40 churches, is my understanding. And to show you really what it's all about, we want to show you this wonderful video produced by Manatee Schools Television, MSTV, that's currently on our Good News page. So if we could show that?
(Singing) By the token sitting on the stage.
We are here for the annual Church Women United's migrant tea. This is an opportunity for the women of Church Women United to give gifts to those children who are migrant students in the Manatee County schools.
Migrant families, their education is disrupted because their families have to move in order to, to work and to, and to live. And so these donations really come in handy to help those, meet those needs.
As they move about, they might move into cold counties, they move into cooler climates. So things like clothing that have sleeves, quilts that have been handmade, they just don't have all of that all of the time.
All of you wonderful women do such a beautiful job all year, making quilts, knitting, crocheting, making hats, making the beautiful dolls for our children, and you do it with heart every single year. And we are tremendously grateful for what you do for, for our community of students.
Being a migrant is a struggle. It means having to pursue work and travel to live a sustainable life.
I cannot help but recognize the huge impact the migrant education program has had on my life.
This is my first time here at the migrant tea ceremony. I'm very grateful for what they do for us, you know? I've never seen them, I've never known where the donations come from, so seeing that it's these great women who come out and do this for us every year, it's amazing.
I have a lot of gratitude towards our community for being willing to step up, to sacrifice, to help meet the needs of others who are less fortunate here within our own community. And I get to witness firsthand the impact and the success that our students get to have.
Okay, again, this is one of those amazing events that just make Manatee County such a wonderful place to live, and these people are representative of that. So I'd like to introduce to you Mario Mendoza. He was in the video. He's coordinator of migrant education programs. And also Dr. Cheryl Holloway, president of the Manatee Church Women United, just to say a few words if that were.
Good morning. This is deja vu for me. It's been a while since I've been before a board, having come from Rochester, New York. But I wanted you to know that since 1941, 1941, the Women of Church Women United movement have held a vision of Christian unity and prayerful action. CW was founded as a racially, culturally, theologically, and inclusive church women's movement to celebrate unity and diversity and work for peace in the world. We meet monthly to pray for peace, recognize organizations and/or individuals who serve the underserved. The migrant tea is but one of the events that we sponsor to give needed items to the migrant children and families who attend my, Manatee County schools. Our goal is focused specifically upon supporting individuals and/or organizations who need help due to unfortunate circumstances. We also provide shoes for children across Manatee County schools, at least twice during the school year. You may not be aware of that, but that happens as well. We work with existing charitable organizations to provide much-needed assistance to the underserved on a monthly basis. We exist to serve and not to be served. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about our work in Manatee County. We wish you the very best as you seek to provide a rich educational environment for our children in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am Mario Mendoza. I am the proud coordinator of migrant education here for the school district of Manatee County. The video pretty much explained most of the questions I usually get. For example, what is a migrant child? And as you know, their parents work in agriculture, and they have to move with the different crop seasons, and so as they move, that is the reason they're called migrant. Many of our students are U.S. citizens, but they're referred to as migrant because they migrate to different parts of the country, like Michigan, a very cold area. So, and I have to say, in, I have been in the past here in the school district of Manatee County, an assistant principal. I've been a principal. And now I am the coordinator of migrant education. And I have to say, while all of the positions and all of the work I've done in the school district of Manatee County has been very rewarding, you know, we get into many educators, most educators, I think, get into education to make a difference. And what I have to say about my position now, I get to see that difference being made almost immediate. It's like that immediate gratification, where you don't always see that in many of the other positions. So I am very thankful to hold that, this position. I am incredibly thankful for our community and for groups like Church Women's United who join in in helping to make a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to do something if we could, because they got up this morning, they came down here on a rainy morning, I wanted to give the members here an opportunity just to step up to the mic if they so desire to do so, just introduce themselves and what church they represent, so.
Good morning. I'm Sandra Holly. I represent Pathways Christian Fellowship. And as a part of our program, I coordinate Souls for Little Souls, which we donate shoes twice a year. The fall of this year, we donated well over 200 pairs of brand-new shoes to children in this community. So we look forward to doing that again in the spring of the year. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm John Cena McRae, and I'm a member of Pathways Christian Fellowship.
Good morning. I'm Angela Brown, and I am a member of St. John First Baptist Institutional Church, Palmetto, Florida.
Good morning. I'm Marjorie Hill, and I'm a member of St. John First Baptist Institutional Church in Palmetto, Florida.
Good morning. My name is Betty Shannon Jones. I'm a member of St. John Institutional First Baptist Church. And our mission auxiliary of St. John is now convening, we're having a campaign to raise money to purchase shoes for the little souls.
Sue Greenwell, St. Peter and Paul, and I'm a retired Manatee County School District teacher.
Good morning. My name is Rhonda Graham, and I'm a member of Pathways Christian Fellowship.
Good morning. My name is Frances Dunbar, and I'm a member of St. John First Baptist Institutional Church, Palmetto.
Good morning. My name is Lucille Hamilton, and I'm a member of St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, Bradenton, Florida.
Good morning. My name is Betty Denmark, and I'm a member of Pathway Christian Fellowship.
Now, if you all would just step back towards the podium and face towards me, we're gonna get a photo of the school board and the superintendent in the background, so we'll be posting this on our social media sites later.
Mr. Chair, as they're walking out, I want to acknowledge Ms. Holly, who served on the Citizen Financial Oversight Committee for several years, and it was nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for everything you've done. Appreciate it and will do. And I did see that that event took place at Trinity United Methodist Church, which is my church.
I attended that, not this year, but the year before, and it's incredible, the, everything that they have to donate for, for migrants. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all again.
And there's no tea, by the way. You know.
Sweet or unsweet? Great recognition for a great organization. They're doing amazing things for our kids. Item number eight, public comment. We have one general public comment, and that is Mr. Michael Hartman. Come on down. We do have several, just FYI, we have several others who are signed up, but those are new business items, and we'll get to those momentarily.
It's a hard act to follow. Esther 2:21, "In those days, while Mordecai sat in the king's gate, two of the king's servants were wroth and sought to lay hands on the king. When Mordecai found out, he sent word to the king, and they were judged." Gatekeepers. You heard about what happened in Las Vegas, the judge was getting ready to pronounce a sentence on a convicted criminal, and all of a sudden, the man just leaped across, I mean, he flew across the other side there. And what happened was, there was a gatekeeper like this officer back here grabbed a hold of him and subdued him. Gatekeepers are in the lobby, and like I said, in this room, the city council, the Board of County Commissioners, the courthouse, Manatee schools, all have armed gatekeepers. Sheriff Grady Judd in Polk County, speaking about another kind of attack, said, "When you think of this kind of criminal, they are evil persons who lurk beneath the level of society, looking for children, attacking children by going online, bypassing their parents. My question is, who or what is making children respond online to the predators? Being online themselves, from older siblings, school classmates? We don't allow guns, knives, drugs, cigarettes in schools, and we can see immediate danger if that rule is violated. But my question is, who is responsible to be a gatekeeper, to keep something away from children, to stop them from responding or being a victim within our county? Not only in the county, Manatee County, but out throughout the state of Florida? And this is not something that's new. It's been going on for years. And the price of freedom is eternal vigilance. That's Thomas Jefferson. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "To ignore evil is to be an accomplice to it." Everybody's got their own opinion on what they think about what's right and what's wrong, but we all know that if we see a child that looks like they're in danger, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna, if we have to put our body in front of that child to protect that child, we're gonna do it. I attended that, not this year, but the year before, and it's incredible, the, everything that they have to donate for migrants. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all again.
And there's no tea, by the way.
Sweet or unsweet? Great recognition for a great organization. They're doing amazing things for our kids. Item number eight, public comment. We have one general public comment, and that is Mr. Michael Hartman. Come on down. We do have several, just FYI, we have several others who are signed up, but those are new business items, and we'll get to those momentarily.
It's a hard act to follow. Esther 221, "In those days, while Mordecai sat in the king's gate, two of the king's servants were wroth and sought to lay hands on the king. When Mordecai found out, he sent word to the king, and they were judged." Gatekeepers. You heard about what happened in Las Vegas. A judge was getting ready to pronounce a sentence on a convicted criminal, and all of a sudden, the man just leaped across, I mean, he flew across the other side there. And what happened was, there was a gatekeeper like this officer back here, grabbed a hold of him and subdued him. Gatekeepers are in the lobby, and like I said, in this room, the city council, the Board of County Commissioners, the courthouse, Manatee schools, all have armed gatekeepers. Sheriff Grady Judd in Polk County, speaking about another kind of attack, said, "When you think of this kind of criminal, they are evil persons who lurk beneath the level of society, looking for children, attacking children by going online, bypassing their parents. My question is, who or what is making children respond online to the predators? Being online themselves, from older siblings, school classmates? We don't allow guns, knives, drugs, cigarettes in schools, and we can see immediate danger if that rule is violated." But my question is, who is responsible to be a gatekeeper, to keep something away from children, to stop them from responding or being a victim within our county? Not only in the county, Manatee County, but out throughout the state of Florida. And this is not something that's new. It's been going on for years. And "The price of freedom is eternal vigilance." That's Thomas Jefferson. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "To ignore evil is to be an accomplice to it." Everybody's got their own opinion on what they think about what's right and what's wrong. But we all know that if we see a child that looks like they're in danger, the first thing that we're going to do is, we're going to, if we have to put our body in front of that child to protect that child, we're going to do it. You talk about a bear robbed of her whelps, that bear is going to go nuts. And so, my thought is, is sometimes we look at the dangers that you can see right out front, but there's other hidden dangers. You get into the mind of a child, you give them access to stuff. I remember hearing about a, they did a interview with Ted Bundy before he was executed, and he said, "On the way home from school one day, when he was a young child, he found pornographic material in somebody's trashcan. And because of that seed that was planted, he became a serial killer." That doesn't mean that everybody's going to do that, but it means that if there's a match that gets lit around gasoline, there may be a possibility that something's going to blow up. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, general public comment. We'll move to item number nine, reports and presentations. Mr. Jensen, come on up.
Good morning, Chair Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong. In December, our students took the second progress monitoring assessment for mathematics, and this is part of the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking, the kind of unique-to-Florida set of tests, and kind of first-in-the-nation where students take three exams over the course of the year so we can more accurately gain, gauge their learning and progress. And so, for this particular exam in December, we had students in K through 2 taking Star Math, and then our students in 3rd through 8th grade taking the FAST mathematics exam, which is what I'll be presenting to you, kind of as part of our series on data updates around our student performance. As a reminder, what the state releases to districts and families, attempts to clarify that, you know, in this, in the suite of three assessments, there's PM1 at the beginning of the year, PM2 at the middle of the year, that's what our students took in math in December, and what they're taking in reading here in January, that's the midpoint. And then, at the end of the year, they'll take PM3, which is kind of the summative endpoint, how did our students learn throughout the year? And so, this is really our midpoint reflection to see how we're doing relative to the state and make decisions for the second half of the year based on what we're seeing. And again, as a reminder, and you've seen this slide before, this particular assessment at the end of the year will hit four components of our school grade and accountability formulas, so that beige column in the middle, the math achievement, the math learning gains, and the math learning gains of our lowest quartile students, as well as an important component of our middle school acceleration formula, which is how many students are taking high school-level courses and middle school. And again, as a reminder, there's really two primary mathematics progressions in Manatee County and throughout the state. There's the traditional math progression, which is what most people are familiar with, grade 3, grade 4, grade 5, 6, 7, to pre-algebra in 8th grade. But for students who are proficient and are demonstrating advanced ability in mathematics, there's an accelerated pathway that can begin as early as 3rd grade, eventually leading to 6th grade math their 5th grade year, 7th grade math their 6th grade year, to potentially algebra and geometry. And there's lots of on-ramps and off-ramps into that pathway, so students might start accelerating in math when they reach middle school, or they may start in elementary school, depending on, you know, what's most appropriate for them. And so, there's many different on-ramps and off-ramps onto that accelerated pathway. And we'll look at some new data about that acceleration today as well. And finally, for middle school, you can see here that if you come in as a student taking 6th grade math in 6th grade, you'll often take then 7th grade, and then pre-algebra as an 8th grader. If you come in and take 6th grade accelerated math, meaning maybe I'm starting, like I've hit middle school and I'm looking to accelerate in math now, you may do 7th grade accelerated in 7th grade, and then take Algebra 1 as an 8th grader. And then, for many of our students who start accelerating in mathematics in elementary school and who go through that pathway, they may take grade 7 accelerated as a 6th grader, and then take Algebra 1 as a 7th grader and Geometry as an 8th grader. And so, there's many different acceleration pathways for our students, again, depending on their readiness, their family's desire to have them accelerate. And as you'll see in some of our later slides, we do a very good job supporting our students in acceleration here in Manatee. So, for the PM2 mathematics results for 3rd through 7th grade, you can see the state results versus the Manatee results, and we'll disaggregate it a little bit further on the next slide. And really, what we're looking for in the macro level here, right, because we're looking at thousands and thousands of students across this view, is, you know, are we making the same gains as the state? As you saw in our first presentation in mathematics, our students started the year more prepared for mathematics. We started in a place where we're outperforming the state. Are we gaining at the same rate or a greater rate than the state? Are we keeping up that learning throughout the year? And you can see as a whole, we're staying pretty steady with that. And we're also looking to see, are we moving students from one category to another?
You got a technical issue, but we've all got the presentation.
Okay, perfect. So, I'll verbally talk you through it. So, on the next slide, we decided to break out Manatee also into our district-operated schools and our charter schools as well. So, you can see that not only are we performing as a district very well in Manatee across all students and schools, but our district-operated schools are really supporting students in mathematics proficiency. So, we're, especially at elementary school, really outperforming the state, both in initial mathematics proficiency, as well as growth from PM1 to PM2. Lots of upward arrows on this chart.
Mr. Jensen, kind of a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, when did you say we tested them?
So, the testing happened in December.
What time in December? Just out of curiosity.
Mid-December.
Because it just seems to me like, we're, when you look back at the total numbers, like we were so much higher a percentage of students tested to the state level, right? So, I was wondering, what was that? I mean, did everybody do it at the same time period? Even this slide right here, where we broke down, you know, state, charter, and us, we're still significantly higher. I mean, 10%, 9%, 10%. So, did we all do it at the same time? Does the state dictate that?
I appreciate you saying that. So, the PM2 window is kind of from December through January, and so districts can set their own testing calendars, as you adopt every year. And so, some districts do all of their testing in December, some districts do all of their testing in January, some like us do one test in December and one test in January. And so, you're seeing the lower state-tested numbers, because that reflects all the districts that are doing their testing right now in mathematics. And so, we'll be able to provide you with updated data. Speaking with our Accountability and Assessment Department, we were looking at kind of what districts were remaining to test here in January, and we're, we don't think the numbers will move too much from a comparison perspective, but we'll be able to share that updated data with you at the end of January.
Thanks.
Like I said, and you can see here on this previous slide, we really captured 3rd through 7th grade in that main data table, because 8th grade looks a little bit different here for us as far as our data. And that's because we accelerate students who are proficient in mathematics here in Manatee. And so, asked our team to pull some of that data, and you can see that, on average, we accelerate 78% of our students, our middle school acceleration rate is 78%. That basically means of students who are proficient in mathematics, demonstrate proficiency, what percentage of them take a high school level and are successful in a high school-level mathematics course while in middle school? And so, that's more than 3 out of 4 of our students, which ranks us 10th in the state in accelerating students, so we obviously do very well with that. And you can kind of see, relative to the state, what percentage of 7th graders are in Algebra 1 or Geometry, so those are going to be your students who are most accelerated. So, 1 in 10 of our students essentially are on a very accelerated path in mathematics. And then, you see about half of our students take Algebra 1 or Geometry in their 8th grade year. You also see that of those students who are taking Algebra 1 and Geometry in middle school, they're being very successful at it, with 87% proficient in Algebra 1 and 97 in Geometry. And this is based on last year's data. You see the 22, 23. This is summative end-of-year data, but I thought it would be good context for how many students we accelerate. So, this slide shows that 8th grade FAST PM2 data. And you can see that in, on this slide, we underperform the state from a proficiency standpoint, both at PM1 and at PM2. And that's why I wanted to provide that acceleration data, because the students who are taking the 8th grade FAST math assessment are students who really haven't attained proficiency yet in middle school. And so, other districts might have a larger number of proficient students taking this 8th grade exam, whereas we may have a smaller number of students taking this 8th grade exam, showing the discrepancy in data. So, our students enrolled in Algebra and Geometry, there isn't a mid-year FAST assessment for them, and so, we don't see their data reflected in the same way in this, these like interim benchmarks. I also wanted, since we've kind of put the data, or put that course progression out there for elementary acceleration, and this is the first year we have full 3rd through 5th accelerated courses happening at all of our elementary schools, I wanted to show you how successful our students who are accelerating in elementary school are being. So, you can see, just on PM2, about 80 to 90% of our students are already proficient on their grade-level standards and who are in those accelerated elementary school courses. And then, the last table that I wanted to show you, or set of tables, really, we haven't looked at before, but I think this, looking at this at PM2 is a really good time to look at it. When we, when our students take these exams, we get a number of different data points about not just how they're doing as a whole, like are they proficient or are they not proficient? We get data on this particular strand of standards, like number sense and additive reasoning. How are our students doing? How are they doing relative to their peers across the state? We see that up here at the district level. If I'm a school administrator, I see that at my school level. If I'm a teacher, I see that at my classroom level and my individual students as well. And so, we really can start drilling down with this second set of assessments and seeing where are we strong, like what content areas are we strong in, and then what content areas do our students need additional support in, like what benchmark standards strands do our students need additional support in? And we can start differentiating instruction, doing additional review and support for students in those areas. And so, that first slide was kind of our 3, 5 by strand. This is our 6 through 8, and you can see areas where we're, where we're kind of aligned to the state, areas where we're outperforming the state, areas where we need some additional support. And then, we also can drill all the way down into our benchmark results. And this is something that our assessment team creates and disseminates to our schools. This is actually a PM1 example, because we're still compiling our PM2 ones. This really gets in the weeds on the data. But you can see, going all the way down to benchmark, you know, what questions are being asked, how are our students performing on those questions aligned to individual standards? And that's really when we start getting into the nitty-gritty of what are we doing at our schools on kind of a moment-to-moment, day-by-day basis to support learning? And actually, to kind of have a even larger conversation about that, I invited Katia Johnson, who's our new executive director for school improvement and leadership development, and also a recent principal at Palm View K8, to kind of talk through what our principals will be using this data for, as well as like how our executive directors support principals in using this data.
Thank you for your time this morning. If it's okay, I'm actually going to toggle back through a few of these slides, just in reference to some of the points I'll be speaking. I think if I have my slide numbers correctly, I'm going to go back to slide 4 to start. As you can see from Mr. Jensen's presentation, that the mid-year PM2 data does give us a lot of information that schools, school leaders and schools can use to really move into a strong second semester. I've been asked to speak a little bit more about the process that we would expect to see at our schools that would be positioned to show growth in quarter 3 and moving into this PM 3. I believe slide 4 is where I'm going to start. Schools will be looking at this PM2 data, school leaders especially, and the teachers, and they'll really ultimately be comparing PM1 to PM2 to track progress and how we're doing in the first semester. But Mr. Jensen spoke about this slide here, which are your school grade components. And so, now that we have PM2 data, school leaders and schools can look at their PM2 data in relation to gauge where we're at with our school goals for these components here. We have retrofitted scores from PM3 now with those new scale scores. And so, when we look at the PM2 scale scores and our PM3 scale scores, we can see the progress that we're making, and are we on track for the goals that we set in each of these buckets moving into PM3? We can monitor subgroup performance, a lot of conversations around these buckets here with school leaders and their schools. In addition to that, school leaders and teachers will break it down further by grade level, by teacher, looking at individual student movement. In this particular slide here, excuse me, that Mr. Jensen slowed, showed with the level, the proficiency, the performance levels, you can see, as a school leader and as teachers, we would look at these performance levels, and we would put names to numbers, and we would say, okay, so, looking at those level 2s, for example, what is it that we need to do to move those 2s to 3s, to proficient? And when you break it down further, which is what school sites will do, you may find that a student might have missed one or two questions, or it may just be one standard that that student is struggling in. And so, that'll drive the next semester as far as support and reteaching with those standards. In addition, looking at the reporting categories, which was this slide here, and this is just another example, of how leaders will use reporting categories to identify those standards. If you look at the example, 3rd grade fractional reasoning, you see 49% of the state, 63% in the district. We can look at that, and we can say, for example, looking at our pacing and our curriculum maps, have these standards in this particular category been taught yet in the first semester? If they have, which standards have been taught in the first semester, problem-solving with teachers about how we can reteach and support students moving into the second semester? And then, if standards have not been taught yet, then this is really good formative data to say, what have students mastered already, or what strengths are they coming in with that we can build upon moving in when we address these at the time that we do? Again, not to flip back to that slide, but in addition to focusing on proficiency, schools will also, school leaders and teachers will focus on learning gains, and not just learning gains of our lowest-performing students, but even our proficient students and our accelerated students, because we want all students to grow. And so, again, this PM2 data will help, looking at those scale scores, and just see where students need to go to get to that next level or to make that learning gain. None of this stays in the hands of principals and their leadership teams. You heard me say teachers a few times. Collaboration is key, and so collaborative conversations with teams, leadership teams, focused on action planning, that is something we would hope to see and expect to see in schools as we're walking campuses. That's where we'll provide support. I know with the five schools that I've been assigned, these will be focused discussions that I'll be having with principals and leadership teams, and seeing truly how we can support moving into the second semester with this action planning. So, it's targeted, so it's specific, but we're not just supporting, you know, small groups of students, but every student. I know, I believe Mr. Jensen might speak on our next upcoming principal meeting, and when we bring leaders together again, and the conversations and the action planning that we'll be having with them around this data as well. So, thank you.
I do have one question for you, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
If you move forward to the slide that, I'll tell you when to stop, the one that had, it broke down, there you go, that broke down to the benchmarks, results, and things like that. So, now, we're getting like really deep into the results, right? Which, I want to make sure, so do our teachers, are they able to, is the next step, if we're going even deeper, right? Is the next step, Mr. Cho's 3rd grade class, here's my roster, here's my scores, right? Is that the next step beyond this? Like, obviously, y'all didn't show that for us, but does the teacher get to see that next step of benchmarks to all their kids? They scored a 4, they scored a 0, you know, that sort of thing?
Absolutely, absolutely. And they can see this data on the FAST portal, broken down by class, by section, by student as well, in addition to the spreadsheets, you know, that we get from our data and assessment department that principals will share with teachers. But yes, absolutely, teachers will have conversations, you know, can have conversations specifically around, this is my roster, these are my students, these are their scale scores, this is the growth from PM1 to PM2. If I'm looking at learning gains, and they had a prior FAST in May of last year, they can look at and say, am I on track to make gains? You know, looking at the PM3 from last year, moving into the PM3 this year. If a student is not moving, or if gains are not happening, that's a conversation. And then, leadership teams will come together and problem-solve that. You know, if you have concerns about attendance, if you're looking at your subgroups, ESOL, ESE, if there's additional needs and supports, that's where teams can really come together and have those conversations about how we can work together as a team to support students. But yes, by standard, by cluster, they'll be able to look at those things. Now, actually- Now, actually, by standard, I wanna be careful about that. I'll let my data and assessment team talk more specifically about that. But you can see the clusters when you log into the FAST portal. And then, you know, like Mr. Jensen spoke to, our team works really, really well on breaking down standards and percentage of questions asked, so.
Thank you. I don't know if board members have any questions for Ms. Johnson?
I just have one. We can get this broken down by school as well, correct? I know we had that before. I asked about that on the, on the English test, but I've not got that. Can we get that still on both of these, PM one and PM two, by school?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to share the school level data with you.
Yes, I'd like to see that, please. I have it from last year, so I'd like to look at that to compare. I don't know if we keep that from year to year. If I can get that, that would even be better if we, if I could see, okay, last year to this year, you know, because that just follows the student, to be honest. If you're looking at a second grade this year, or a third grade this year to a fourth grader, then you can see the progress that we have made from that school, if that student indeed stayed at that school. So, if I could get that, I'd certainly appreciate that.
I'd be happy to share it with all board members.
Yes, I'd like to see that.
Thank you for asking for that, because I would be interested in seeing that as well. General question, if a student takes algebra or geometry in eighth grade, seventh or eighth grade, does that enter into their GPA in high school?
Yes, ma'am.
It does? Okay. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mesri, did you have something, or no?
Just nodding, yes, it does.
Thank you.
And so, the last couple of slides I have for you are just, Ms. Johnson really talked about what the school level responses to this data looks like. As a district, we're obviously responding to it as well. And so, you've heard a lot about what our assessment department does, but we will also be doing a really large deep dive into this data with principals at our next leadership meeting with them, where they're gonna be working with their school lab of data, action planning to address next steps with their school leadership team, with their teachers. We obviously have a new executive director of school improvement and leadership development who's gonna be working with schools and school leaders directly to support this work. We've already started modifying our school support schedule, so this is where our principal supervisors, all of our executive directors, look at their school's data for the schools they supervise and start tailoring what additional supports and interventions they may need if we see schools that may need additional support in moving forward in one area or another. Our curriculum department has created targeted standards-based reviews in SchoolAG. So, teachers can use these specific standard reviews. So, like if I get that data and I notice my class, I taught this standard, but it didn't seem like it took in my class for some reason, here's another resource I can use to address that with them. Again, we're gonna be doing additional professional learning and support with that standards-based planning focus. And obviously, our schools and even at the district level, we're gonna be looking at a lot of student-level data, you know, student by student, what are our trends, what's going on, and where do we need additional resources and support? And then, the upcoming timeline for you, this week, we start our PM two assessments for reading. And so, at the January 30th board meeting, I'll be bringing you a presentation on our reading assessment results for grades three through eight. And then, May 13th to 17th, you'll see the windows for our PM three assessments. And so, all the work we do over the next few months will be gearing up towards preparing students for that summative exam at the end of the school year. Any additional questions or comments?
Real quick on the reading, do we do acceleration with English as well, with the reading as well?
We have students in eighth grade enrolled in English one for high school.
So, what if, what if a junior is dual-enrolled, taking college English, are they taking the FAST?
So, no. Well, a junior wouldn't, because FAST only rolls into ninth and 10th grade.
Gotcha.
And so, high school acceleration looks a little bit different, right? Because you hit that through dual enrollment, AP exams.
Right.
CTE courses and credentials, industry certifications and those. And so, there's a lot of different components that move into the high school acceleration formula, but it's similar in that it's kind of like preparing students for the next step, so college or career. And so, most of our juniors and seniors in high school, you won't see reflected in the, in kind of the high school level data.
Gotcha, gotcha. Any question? I don't see any of the board members lit up to speak. Thank you for the presentation. I wanna say, I know that, to Dr. Weissman, everybody in the district, I mean, I know this comes, a lot of work goes into creating the data, but I think it's powerful for us to have, and especially as I was a former teacher, like to be able to break down this each student, each benchmark, you know, did Chad miss a week of school, and that's when we covered this benchmark, and that's why he got zero? Or a low score, whatever? So, I really do appreciate, I mean, it doesn't just, the data doesn't just form and happen, it's people putting it together. So, I think it's extremely important for the district to really capture where we're at now and how can we improve and get better, so. Yeah, Dr. Weissman.
Chairman, if I can add two points and stay at the podium, Mr. Jensen, in case you don't agree with something I say here, but first of all, certainly with the progress monitors, the advantage is we are getting much more granular data than we did in the prior assessment system. And so, teachers are able to dig down further. Keep in mind, what we still don't get is the specific items, right? Because it's a controlled test bank. So, when we get a benchmark with a low percentage attached to it, and we're concerned about it, we have to drill into that ourselves. And so, teachers will do additional formative assessments to try to figure out what is the misconception that needs to be re-taught, right? And that's the, that's the piece that the state system isn't doing for us, and that's why teachers are doing those additional formative assessments. But certainly, we get more data than before. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we can certainly, you know, we can slice and dice these data points all different ways, just keep in mind that year-to-year comparatives right now are not very meaningful, because when our students took these progress monitors last year, first of all, the item banks were not as robust as they are now, which impacts kind of, you know, validity of the results, but also, the scoring ranges have changed and been updated. And so, if you take what you were given by the team last year and compare it to this year, you're not doing an apples-to-apples comparison. Now, we can go back and retroactively update that data, but to Mr. Choate's point, a lot already goes into this, and the question becomes, at what point are you spending more time in spreadsheets than you are working with students? So, that's the balancing act right now, but we'll look forward to working through all the data with our principals. And of course, this is why the collaborative planning time for teachers is so very important, so that they can talk to each other about what they're seeing in their classrooms, what they're seeing in their data, and how they take their next steps.
Any disagreeing with that?
No disagree.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. Moving to item number 10, consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'm moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you.
Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Jumped ahead. Superintendent?
Chairman, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for January 16th, 2023.
Tom it.
Now, we've got a motion.
And I'll second again.
All right. And seeing no comments on the consent items, let's go ahead and vote and approve the consent items, or item number 10, and that passes five to zero. Moving to item number 11, public comment for new business items. We do have three public comments for new business items. And so, I just wanna remind the public commenters, as you come up, it's the item that you signed up for is what you are speaking about. And it looks like everyone is on the same item. I believe so. So, first up for the public comment is Ms. Heather Felton, followed by Sheila Lynn Shifrin. Did I pronounce that correctly? Great. All right, Ms. Felton, come on up.
You all know me, Heather Felton. So, I am speaking on the new policy 2520 that is on the agenda today for discussion. While I feel that this is a good first step, I feel that there's still work that needs to be done on this policy, because it is not going to repair the damage that has been done over the last two years in terms of the removal of books. And I brought you an example, you're welcome to come borrow it at any time, as long as I get it back at some point, because my daughter likes this book. All right, so this book is called Drama. It is a middle school book. It has been removed from, and let me make sure I get my, my schools straight here, it has been removed from Braden River Middle School, Braden River High School, Horizons King Middle School, Mona Jane, Nolan Parish Community, SUG, and Williams Elementary School. It is still available at Manatee High School and Southeast High School. If this book were actually pornography, it should not be available in any school. It's not pornography. You're welcome to look at it, it is a middle school book. The only thing that I can find that might possibly be qualified as why they wanted it removed, and of course, is not available without a public records request for me to find out the reason why this book was pulled, is because there is a same-sex, closed-mouthed kiss onstage as part of a drama performance when the female lead gets stage fright and runs away. A boy jumps in and takes her place so they can finish the play. And there's a closed-mouth kiss in one square of this graphic novel. That's it. There's nothing in here to titillate, there's nothing, no nudity, no profanity, nothing in here to excite sexually. There is nothing pornographic in this book. But there is no way for me as a citizen to say, I want you to reconsider this. There is no way for me to do that as a citizen in Manatee County. I have no rights as a citizen of Manatee County to see about getting this book put back on the shelves. This was removed as reactionary, fear, or laziness. This needs to be taken care of. There is no way to fix the damage over the last two years of book removals. This needs to be changed. These can't be done in the dark, this should be done in the sunshine. The shadow bans of removing books without any public comment, without any open discussion, is absolutely inappropriate. You should be involved in this process, and you should do better for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shifrin? And then, followed by Margaret Ellen Newsom?
My name is Sheila Lynn Shifrin. This is the first time I've spoken in front of a school board as a community member. I am a retired educator from Texas. I taught pre-K through college, self-contained, ESL, et cetera. And then, I went to Illinois, and I was a middle school librarian for 15 years. So, I am here today to talk to you about my favorite lesson that I ever taught, and that is banned books. I taught banned books during banned books week, celebrated by the American Library Association Freedom to Read. The biggest thing that I teach my children is that books, not all books are banned. First, they're challenged. And in our district, and I have come to find out that Florida actually has it in their state statutes, these things are supposed to be done by a committee. Your district has a, our district, because I live in Lakewood Ranch, has a formal form here for students, for parents to challenge a book. It needs to be reviewed in the sunshine, as the other lady said. Your librarians have gone through professional journals, peer reviews, School Library Journal, Library Journal, Book List, Publishers Weekly. We can't read every, I had 12,000 books in my library. I personally read 86 books last year, and I'm retired, and those are like 500-page books. So, it's impossible to read everything, so we have to rely on the professional judgment of others. Frequently, when someone brings a challenge, they haven't read the book, it's hearsay. So, I wanna try to stay away from, you know, hearsay that I heard. So, you have a wonderful form here, sorry. You have state statutes that are real specific about having parents on the committee. I know you have a SAC committees that meet in the schools, and parents and community members are allowed to be there. This would be a great place to review it if you don't have a district-wide committee to review books. And I couldn't find a list of the books that have been removed from Manatee County. And there should be documentation for each of the books that was removed with the reasoning and whether, you know, it was put on the shelf or returned to the shelves or not. One thing that I appreciated on the form here that you all have is to not assign it to your, to my child. A parent has a right. In my library, I had books that, I had letters from parents saying, my child can read any book in your library, and I had letters from parents saying, my child may not read these books, and we restricted it. Sometimes, when books are banned, people have no idea the reasoning. That's not my three minutes, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just ask that, you know, we follow the state statute. Thank you so much.
Margaret Ellen Newsom? Morning.
First of all, most of you know me by my name, Meg Newsom. I taught in this district for 38 years. My students, my children, were students in Manatee County Public Schools, K through 12, and are doing very well. They've received an excellent education here. I am very proud to be a member of the Manatee County Schools community. Now, I'm speaking as a citizen. And I too, want us to follow the state policies, the stated district policies, and give parents, actual parents of Manatee County children, decision-making input into the restriction, removal, or the retention of school library books. Not every school is the same, not every community within Manatee County is the same. And parents need to be involved in the decision-making. We have school advisory councils. We also, many of us, at least at one time, had library committees, which involve parents. And no book should be removed without parents reading the book, discussing the book, and having it go on record what the decision was. When you leave it to a single individual, administrator, a principal, whoever, especially in an atmosphere of fear, where people are threatening people's credentials, their certifications, in some cases, criminal intent, of course, individuals are going to err on the side of restriction, because no one wants to stick their neck out. But, the state wants parents to be involved in this decision. Right now, even when it's being brought to school advisory councils, very often, it's simply to sign off on what the principal has already decided. It must involve people reading the book in its entirety, deciding on its educational value or not, and then, if it's appropriate, to remove it from that school. We also need, as the previous speaker said, a way that books which have already been removed without that process, we give parents the right to reconsider books that have already been removed. This, as she also said, this shadow docket of pulling books without any public scrutiny whatsoever, without any records whatsoever, it does not give parents the rights that our state requires. So, I urge you both to adopt the change in policy, and in the future, to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes item number 11, the public comment for new business items. We move to item number 13, which is public hearing. So, I'm going to close this meeting and open up So I'm going to close this meeting and open up the public hearing so that we can consider and to adopt the amendments or amend the school board policies that we had in question. Those policies, we did a workshop and went over those, I believe it was last, our last workshop, was those policies. They've been out for 30 days. So this is an open time for anybody here, you don't have to have signed up, to comment on any of those board policies that were in question, discussed, et cetera, and posted. See no one wanting to come up and discuss those items. I'm going to close this public hearing and reopen up the school board meeting and move to item number 14, which is new business. And the first item there, this is non-consent items. Item number one, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval to adopt new policies and amend school board policies, including policies 1500, 3500, 4500, 5120, 6233, 6235, 6550, and 8325.
Thank you very much. So we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do we have a...
No, moved.
Motion, thank you.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion on those policies that Dr. Weisong mentioned? Board?
What were they again?
And Chairman, just to...
Yes.
Just to clarify, these policies did get initial approval with, for preliminary approval and permission to advertise on December 12th. We workshopped on December 15th. This group of policies that we're asking you to approve here does not include 2520. That was pulled out separately. That'll be the next item. But all of the other items that we discussed are here in one package.
Thank you. So we have a motion. We have a second. I don't see any board members wanting to speak on these policies, so let's go ahead and vote on the adopting of the new policies, amending of the school board policies that And that passes, those policies pass, five to zero. Item number two, Dr. Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval to amend school board policy 2520.
No moves.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second? Okay. And we do have a speaker on the floor, actually several lit up. Just real quick, I just want to mention something just to the board as we move forward. Obviously, we have a lot of policies go back and forth, or we look at amending and putting new policies in perspective. This was pulled during the board briefings, and I'm absolutely okay with it being pulled in a separate item. I'm okay, any of our policies being their separate items, so we don't have to approve them in a cluster. I would only ask that, moving forward, that the whole board knows that this is going to be pulled. I'll give you an example. When we did the policy on the chair having to be present, Ms. Messenger asked at that time of the workshop, "Hey, can we pull this item separately from all the other items?" So I'm okay with it being pulled, and I'm absolutely okay with this one being pulled. My only concern was I felt like as the chair, I was the only one knowing that it was being pulled, instead of the whole board knowing that it was going to be pulled. I'm not saying we got to vote on whether or not we should pull, and we should all be able to pull each policy, but I hope I'm making sense of that.
Not really.
So, so no one knew, no one knew about it being pulled until after the fact. And so my concern is, the board didn't know that we were pulling this policy by itself until they were told with the final agenda it being approved. So I just felt like the board should know about that prior, like Ms. Messenger did with that. I'm not saying it's, we shouldn't have pulled this separately. I don't, that doesn't bother me. But obviously, it's an important policy, and we should have requested it as a whole board, knowing it. I just felt like me, to be, put it on me as the chair to be the only one that knew that before it went out. I think the whole board needs to know that. So it wasn't like it's, we don't have a policy for this, right? We don't have a policy to whether or not to pull our policies or not, but I felt like we should have been, as a board member, everybody should have known, "Hey, we want to pull this," instead of just knowing once it was, it was put on the agenda. So we can just do that moving forward. I mean, that way, I'm not the only one saying, "Yes, put it, pull it, not pull it, whatever." So...
Are we not giving a summary when items are pulled, say consent or a policy, that we get an update via email?
We do at the end, you do at the end.
Right, at the end, but...
We do at the end. And that's my point. So my point is...
So you're saying if somebody has an interest in pulling an item or a policy specifically, you want us to bring that up here in the...
I would rather do it before, like as we're doing a workshop, if we feel like this is an important policy that shouldn't be clustered with the group. Obviously, this policy was pulled because it wasn't going to be clustered in the group of all the other policies.
Right.
So if you don't want this policy in there, you don't want to vote no for the other, I don't know, 10 policies we had, whatever many we had. So I get removing policies. I totally am fine with that. It's just, I would rather have it as a group we all know from the jump, rather than after our briefings, et cetera, and then it's pulled out, and then we see the agenda to know that it's pulled out. That's all. I mean, it's just timing. I don't care about being pulled.
I agree.
It's just the timing of it. So, but we've never really had this issue, so it's the first time it's really come up. So, and it's your own, you and then Ms. Bray are led up to speak.
Yeah, well, talk about the policy, but what you had to say, I'm the culprit. I asked for it to be pulled during my briefing, which was Monday morning. So, you know, part of it is based on reading and since the last workshop, reading, conversations with staff, conversations with people in the public. And so it's, it was appropriate to pull it on Monday, to ask for it to be pulled. What, what I think what you're asking is that an email go out earlier than Friday's amended, or, well, actually, the agenda went out on Tuesday. So I don't, I don't get what, what exactly you wanted from...
So, so this one is a little bit different. We, my, my question is, or my ask is, if you're, let's say you're the fourth board briefing, you want to pull that item. It comes to me as the chair, whoever the chair is typically, and they say, "Here's the agenda. Do you want to pull?" So the question to me, what I'm asking, is that we don't really have this very often where we pull a policy. The last time we did, that I can go back and say, "Here's an example," was with Miss Messenger's wanting to pull the policy, whatever number that was. But she pulled it knowing from the beginning that this was not a policy she was in support of, to be able to then have other discussion and vote on it outside of it. I felt like this, this was, this is not consent items that we're allowed to pull. I'm just saying, for me as the chair, I feel like that this should be done, all of us knowing, "Hey, I want to remove this or not," and everybody knows at the same time. That's all. And whether or not, how we do that, you want to email it, in the workshop, I personally felt like this should have been an approval on the agenda, and we vote and pulled that way, that everyone knew that it was being done. That was my personal feeling, because again, I felt like I was the only one that knew this was happening, because briefings were already done. And so that's all. So, I mean, how we, how we want to fix that as a board, I'm not saying we got to discuss that right now, this minute. It's pulled, it's fine. I'm not against it being pulled. I'm not against us, I think for time-wise, I think it's maybe a little bit redundant to break them all down, and we vote on each one separately. And I'm okay with pulling ones that we feel like, if a board member feels like we need this one pulled, I'm absolutely okay with it. So I hope you don't get that I'm not okay with it. I just thought that the timing, everyone should know it all at the same time. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. So however we want to figure that out, we can, we can workshop that at another, another time. But the...
I won't call you a culprit. I will say that if an item is pulled like that, that staff email the rest of the board. That's all. And it didn't even have to define the member who pulled it, just that it was pulled. That's all.
Yep, Ms. Bray.
I think that's all.
Well, there is a board policy on the establishment of agendas. Board policy 165.1 says that the superintendent shall establish the agenda for board, for school board meetings in consultation with the board chairman. And so really, the superintendent, by your policy, has the authority to set up the agenda in the way he feels is appropriate to address the business of the district in an efficient manner. And so to the extent that he has, after, as part of his briefings, determines that maybe one policy should be separated out based on feedback from the board, he can do that. And I think that's what he chose to do in this instance. If the board simply wants the superintendent to communicate that to the board after it's occurred, so you have a bit of a heads-up, that can certainly be accomplished. But I just want you to know that the superintendent does have the discretion...
Sure, sure.
...to either lump these all as one item or break them out into separate items or in some other...
All of them separately, yeah.
Right, right. So it's not really pulling the item, because it's really just, how is he organizing the items on the agenda, whether he puts them all together, breaks them separately, or lump some that may seem that they're not going to have much discussion or require any debate, and then others that he kind of has a feel for may require more time to break those out.
And just to follow up on that, so for this specific instance, we had board briefings that were a little spread out because of the restart of the semester and different schedules. So we had one board member's brief on, on Friday afternoon, three more on Monday, and then the chairman on Tuesday morning, and then board members, I called each of you either Tuesday night or Wednesday morning because of the weather, to give you an update on, on how dismissal went. But we also then went through all of the agenda changes. So, so when there are a lot, I do try to do that with you by phone. We certainly can do it by email, but I needed to call each of you that day anyway. So that's how that went. Chairman, I think what, what you're referencing is that on a policy where there are multiple meetings and workshops involved, you're saying it would, it would be better to indicate that someone wants to pull it at that workshop as opposed to the week before the meeting? Is that what you're...
Correct, correct. And, and, but I do understand Ms. Forman's point of, hey, there was 30 days, and we got people to talk to us and things like that. So I absolutely understand the policy, and it's, it's a, it's a big one, and there's some contr, you know, there's some issues behind it. The other ones didn't. And so I'm okay with pulling. And maybe, maybe we just, as a board, we know that, hey, some of these probably need to be pulled anyways because of whatever reason, right? So, I mean, I don't even need to belabor it any longer. So, Ms. Forman, you were up first.
Oh, okay.
With the actual policy portion.
Yes, actual policy. And I don't know, board, how you want to handle this. I mean, I've got, I've had multiple conversations with, with people. I gave Mr. Jensen a very detailed rewrite of the proposed policy. And there are issues in there that I think that we need to address, whether we are in agreement on them or not, certain steps. And I don't know if you want me to go through those now, or if we want to workshop this again, but I strongly believe that we're not ready to vote. We don't have a policy ready for a vote. There are several issues with it, and certain things that it does not accomplish, certain things that it does not align with state statute. So if you want details, I'm happy to go into some details. I'll make a brief, try to, and then you can decide. The objectives that I had in, in these changes was to, one, stop shadow banning, and that, that's banning, pulling books from the shelf without any objections. Stop books being removed for reasons other than state, other than statute, and that would be fear, time, what, what some of our public commentators had. Put parental choice in the policy, and there's a number of ways to do that, but we've got to get parents in there, you know? And they have absolutely no rights in, in this policy, the way it's drafted. And then finally, and probably the most important, I think, is the board responsibility. The state statute says that the board is supposed to be responsible, but yet we are not taking any action on any of these. Board responsi, I'll start with board responsibility first. The principal makes a recommend, first of all, the principal's making a decision. Number one, the principal, in my opinion, should not be, should not be deciding, should be recommending, and that's if we want the principal to do it. It was, comment was made to me about how, how much time this is going to take and does take for principals. You know, you give them a book that's 300 pages, and they've got to take their time away from their other duties or, you know, add time to their day to read it. And that's not fair, you know? The comment was made when we talked about having someone in curriculum do it, is how overwhelmed they are. Well, if we, you know, unfortunately, if we have to add a position to do this, you know, in curriculum, I, I think it's something we need to consider. But, but principal makes a recommendation, not a decision. And the book, and the board needs to be given copies of the objections and the reports. Right now, we're not getting them. I had asked for, under, you know, asked for copies of, of the objections, and I had to ask for them. And I think that that we need to be, if we're responsible, we need to know what's going on. And then finally, board decision. I'm not proposing that we vote as a board on every objection. If, if, if it's decided that the book will stay, you know, principals have had, you know, control of their libraries for years, and so I don't think we need to affirm that. However, if it's being banned, I would really like it to come to us and have the curriculum department come and do a presentation and tell us why it should be removed. Parental choice. If we have these votes at the board level, then parents can come and at least have input at the meeting. They can, they'll know it's coming, they can write to their board members, they can come and speak. So at least they will have some input, because right now, they have no input. The comment was made, we'll use SAC committees. And I can tell you, having visited SAC meetings this year, all SACs are not created equal, and some of them have very, very poor attendance. I attended one where it, the meeting didn't happen at all because nobody came. And I also attended one meeting where, exactly as, as the public commenter said, the principal said, "Here's this book," and it was Drama was one of them, and got a vote to remove it. Okay, no, no discussion. People in SAC had not read the book. So, so that, that disturbs me. I don't think SAC is the appropriate place for it. SAC should be informed, but I don't think that they, they've got decision-making input. The, and now, this one is maybe controversial, probably will be. I think that we've got to, this is not going to stop. It's not going to go away. People are, who are not parents, my understanding is we've only had one parent file an objection, and everything else has been community members. I'm not saying they don't have an input, but they're not reading the book. They're pulling the, the information from a website called Book Looks. They're pulling the information from a website called Book Looks and just repeating what someone else has posted online. And so what I would like is for us to find a way to move the presumption that a book will remain. If it's questionable, we put parent restriction on it. And I won't go into the, you know, but I would like to see a statement in the policy that we recognize parents' rights to determine materials that their students access. Accordingly, the preferred outcome is a restriction rather than discontinuing the item. That's what I would ask, that that specifically be added to the policy to beef up support of our parents, our teachers, our librarians, our principals. And there's still a way, if a book is truly, truly pornographic, offensive, that it can come before the board. But I, we're spending so much time, so much energy, and it's not getting any better. We've got, we've got to do something. And then we need to stop the books being removed for other than statute. Like I said, people aren't reading the books. If you want to define pornography, you've got to read the entire book and for its literary Then principals, having them read the books and take it away from their time, we need to possibly move it to the curriculum department and encourage principals to retain the books. And I do like, one thing that's in that policy that I really, really like is that the principals only have to report, write a full report, is if they're recommending discontinuing a book. And I like that, that saves them a lot of time. They just need to communicate that they've decided to retain a book. The reminder, the board is responsible, okay? And the principal's responsibility is to follow policy. So what we put in this policy is what, that's all that they're responsible for. And to tell them that they, one person, is responsible for making a decision on a book, whether to keep it or remove it, I think, well, I know that that doesn't follow state statute, and I don't feel that we should be putting that burden on principals, that we are responsible and we should take the heat. So, that's my two cents. We can workshop it, we can talk about the issues that I have, you know, what specific changes I'm recommending for the policy, but I don't want to vote on it today.
I have a quick question before we go on to, some other board members are lit up here. We keep hearing it doesn't follow statute, et cetera, to the attorneys. The policy compared to the statute, are we voting on something, potentially voting on something? Is it aligned with the statute? Are we okay or are we not okay? Is my question.
My opinion is that the proposed policy is legally sufficient and it does comply with Florida law.
Okay.
If the policy did require a committee, that committee would have to meet in the sunshine. The policy does not involve a committee, it allows a single individual, and that's a different process. So it does not have to have a meeting in the sunshine of one person.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's, I mean, and obviously, we're not the attorney we hired to be the attorney. So I just want to make sure that, because I agree, if we're not following statute, we shouldn't be voting on this yet, right? So, okay, thank you. So Ms. Bray was up next, then Ms. Messenger.
To one of the commenters about the individual finding a pornography-related material in a trash can and became a serial killer, okay? So, something triggered, something in an individual's mind based on what they found in a trash can. There's a difference between removing a book and banning a book. We are not, I guess, Mr. Jensen, if you could, are we following the state statute with these I'm asking you and also our attorneys, are we following the state statute on the policy that we have in place? Because I've heard that we are violating, we are not following the statute, we're banning, we're removing books that shouldn't be there, there's no parental involvement, yet we have all avenues open for parental involvement. And I'm looking at one of the paragraphs according to this on page, I can't see what page it is, eight, "Parents and residents of the county must make any such objection." Okay, so there is a, "Parents and residents of the county." If it were only parents supporting our school district, we wouldn't have very much money. It takes the entire community to support what we do. So my biggest question is, are we violating the state statute and are we threatening people in the district with felonies?
As part of the authoring of, or kind of suggested revisions to these policies, we looked at the statutory language and obviously, we crafted this with the intent to follow that as we would never, you know, I would never bring something before the board that I, you know, believed would violate statute. And if we had legal review, those suggested changes is part of that process.
Has anyone come to you or even you, Dr. Wise Song, who felt threatened because they, of a felony, because they had a book that was questionable in their classroom or libraries? My point in this whole line of questioning is, commenter was made that teachers and/or principals are being threatened basically for legal action. I have not had that brought to my attention as a board member, I don't know if any others have, but I don't know of anyone that's been threatened. Matter of fact, just the opposite, I've gotten feedback that they like the policy and it takes, it takes the, they're ready to get some of this material out of their classrooms and libraries. And the whole book thing became a hot topic when the statute was voted and accepted at the state level. So are any of these books taken away from the internet? Are any of these books not available through Kindle? Are any of these books not available through Amazon? My point with all of this is, these books are available for any parent to get for their child or student beyond the walls of our district schools. So if anyone out there wants to get their child a book that has been recommended to us or you and the principal to be taken away by a citizen, parent, or anyone, we haven't restricted them from buying that book. Am I correct from another venue, right?
Yeah, the extent of our activities suggested by this policy really only conform to school media centers and classroom libraries.
Okay, and that's our role. School media centers and classroom libraries, that is our domain. After the bell rings, it's the parent's domain. Once they get their child, they can go anywhere and get these books. So that's my point on this. There's so much drama around us pulling books and banning books and all of that, but no one's bringing up the point that any parent has the right to go get that book and give it to their student at any time. It's not up to the district to buy every book by every author and put it in our media centers. I mean, this would be no different than buying a specific magazine and throwing it in a media center that would be prohibited, that I'm sure it wouldn't be on their coffee table for their students to look at or their child to look at. So that's my rant about this. I don't know if there's any book that has been pulled that any teacher at any of our schools, or any book that has been questionable, that a teacher said, read this book and do a report on it. I want a book report on this specific book. If that's the case, I might question that. But so far, I haven't had even that brought up. So there's all this drama, again, about us banning books. Removing books is more the appropriate word. We've removed it from our district media center and classroom, and these books are readily available for anyone who feels they want to purchase it for their student.
Thank you.
Rant over, sorry.
Ms. Messenger.
The drama that surrounds the book removal is because politicians ran on it. And that became the hot topic because politicians put it in their speeches, whether what they said was factual or not is beside the fact they ran on it. And the second thing I want to point out is, it's true that these books will be accessible to anyone as long as the parents go buy it, but I just want to point out that that disproportionately affects low socioeconomic students because those are the parents, those are the kids that are going to be missing out on any book that's removed because their families can't afford to buy those books. I just want to say those two things, those are side points. Mrs. Foreman, I have heard some of the similar concerns that you have said about, you know, updates or changes to the current policy that's before us. And my general response to the people has been that I feel like this policy is always going to be a work in progress. I feel like the legislature's going to continue to change it. They've changed it the last couple of years, every year, it seems like it's getting changed. I think it's going to continue to get changed. And so to me, like, this policy is always going to be a work in progress. We're always going to have to probably make updates or changes to it. I feel like that's a sad thing to be, that we're at this point where that's, once again, it's been so politicized that this is what we're doing instead of talking about, you know, how to improve education, we're talking about how to remove a book. And it's a lot of time, I agree with you. But I also feel as if it's always going to come back before us. So my opinion has always been that this at least is a step in the right direction. And if you have other things that you think should be changed or edited, I'm open to hearing whatever those are, I'd like to see what they are. I don't know if the board's in favor of tabling this or not, or, that's not the proper word, tabling would be wrong, postponing. But in the same respect, I think we need to make the necessary updates we need to make for other legal reasons, that we need to make sure we're adhering to the law as it stands now. And that doesn't mean that we can't improve upon it. I think we should, I'm not disagreeing with you, it sounds like what we have now is adhering to the law. If there's other process changes that you'd like to bring, I am totally open to talking about them. I'm just not sure, I'm afraid that if we don't at least take the action now of the improvements that have been here, we're leaving a bigger gap for the district, and I don't want to do that either. I do understand your points, and I want parents involved as much as possible. Also, one other thing about threats, I got the impression from the speakers that the threats that were being spoken about were threats to people that belonged to the committees. I know that members that belonged to the district committee did get threats based on the whole book objection situation when this law first came down, and we were still trying to figure out even what to do. And here we are, I don't know, two years later, and we're still trying to figure out what to do because it continues to change on us from the state legislature and even how it's viewed in the community, I think. And so I just think this is something that's going to continue to evolve. I don't see it ever standing still, at least not for the next few years, based on political wins, and that's sad, too. So, you know, if the board wants to postpone this, then that's fine. If the board wants to move forward and then take it up at a workshop with your suggestions, I would really be interested in hearing what those are. I do believe this is at least a step in the right direction, and it helps the district move forward at this point, which I think that they need. And it will make it, I think, right now, I believe this already makes it less complicated for the district and makes less work on the principals. I, if we're going to talk about some of the things you suggested, my biggest concern with it always coming before the board is I want it to go before educators. I want educators that really understand the standards and the, have the, that understand the process of learning and what is truly expected of our students. I want them to make the decisions when it comes down to a book like this. I love the idea of having parental feedback and all those other pieces, but to me, this should be something that's based on the educational merits of it. That requires an educator, either that's the principal or however else they want to do it, you know? I know if I was the principal, I would utilize this policy, but I may not convene a committee, but I would go and talk to people. I mean, a principal's going to have trusted people that they're going to go talk to all those people. So just because it's not a committee doesn't mean that those people aren't getting a say. They could be getting a say, but just not in an official way to protect them. Because we've seen a lot of threats happen, we've seen a lot of that, we have seen it. So to me, I feel like this is a step in the right direction. Maybe it's not all the way. I'm not saying it is or it isn't, I'm totally open to whatever you've got, put it on the next workshop, I want to hear it. But if the board isn't willing to postpone this, I'm going to support this because I believe at least it's a step in the right direction. And I think at least it puts some of it in a more concise way for the district, and I think it betters a lot of things that are already, that are happening. And those are all pieces that I think are steps in the right direction, even if it's not all the way yet. I think it would be a mistake to not handle it, at least as it is, because I think that that's not what's best for the district. And I think we're spending so much time talking about this that it really is taking away from our students, and I really, really hate that because I got two in the schools. So I don't really want to spend, I don't want to really hold the schools out any longer than I have to when this at least simplifies some of the processes for them right now, even if that means, we'll talk about it again, I'm open to that. If you have different things, I'm open to those. I just think it's going to, might as well wait until session ends because who knows what else is going to happen to this policy? And that's the truth, you know? Wait until March 9th because who, I just, we just don't, you know, we just don't know. And I feel like this is just the hockey puck of the, of politics right now. And it's just going to, I just think it's going to get, I think it's going to evolve even more personally. And so that's just, I just, I understand where you're coming from, but unless there's really a desire to postpone this, I think this is still helping us move in the right direction, even if there is more that we can do, which I'm open to hearing that, too. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Just, there was a comment about a list of books that have been removed. Does the district have a list of books that have been removed for people to have, to see?
Yes, on the instructional materials portion of our...
Yes, on the instructional materials portion of our, uh, district website.
On the website?
A list by year of all the books that have been challenged, as well as the outcomes for those books.
Okay, okay. Thanks, I just want to make sure we, we had that. Um, because I do think that should be made public of what's been removed.
Can I say one thing? I think the critique of that is, though, that it doesn't give any reasoning why. Like, it might say this book was removed, but it doesn't say why that book was removed because there's, there could be several different reasons why something was removed. And I think that this policy helps fix that because if it was removed, now there's going to be a stated reason why, which is one of the, one of the positives of this policy.
There's a public comment saying that there was no list. There is a list right now.
Yes.
This policy makes it better because we are going to add some of those things. And I agree with Ms. Messenger. I do think this policy is fixing some things. Um, I, I think that, you don't have to stand there anymore. Um, um, I do think that, so my issue with having, books are picked by the principal as the final say of their books that come in to their libraries to begin with. Um, I would assume beginning of the years, librarian comes in, "Hey, here are the books we want to purchase. Here's the, here's what we need to do. Remove because of old, books are falling apart, et cetera." So the principal has the final say on what comes in, but now we don't want them to have final say what goes out? So now do we have to have committees to, to build the, the actual libraries up? Because we don't want the principal to have their own say? I mean, we, we, we can pick it, so we can go both ways with it, um, with, with the way that we, we have it currently. I think that my biggest question was, especially during the briefing at the end of this, was how do the educators, the one who we're doing this day-to-day operations, et cetera, how do you feel about it? And is this, is this moving in the right direction? And I, I get the sense that yes, it is. So, um, I don't think that, and I, I, I think all board policies, whether it be this one or whatever on there, there's always going to be tweaks and changes. But I believe this policy moves us in the right direction. Um, and, and again, I, I, I just go to, we don't, you know, we don't sit there and, and say to the principals what you can, I mean, you, you know, you, you purchased this stuff. You should have the right to say, "I don't want it," because you could not purchase it right from the beginning. So is that going to be the next thing? Is the next thing going to be people are like, "Hey, why aren't we buying this book in our schools?" And the principal is going to then say, "No, I don't want to buy this book in our schools." I, I mean, it's, you, but they bought it. They, they were in charge of what's in there. They bought it. They can remove it. I, because they could have not bought it in the first place, and we'd have all been okay with that. So, um, I think giving it to the principals is what we've, what we've been doing all along with them buying the books. Um, so I, I agree. I think we need to move forward with this. And then I think we, we've, we have workshop this. Doesn't mean we don't need to do it again. But I think this does need to be approved. I'm in favor of approving this. Doesn't mean we can't tweak it as we go to make sure the district has a, has a, uh, to me, cleaner look at what, what we need to do, um, with this, the book policies. Uh, Mr. Tatum, you were led up to speak?
I'll weigh in on this. Everybody else has, so.
Sure, if you want to.
I'll make it hopefully quick. I tend to agree with Ms. Messenger and Mr. Cho that there's nothing perfect and we should move forward. If we need to workshop it again, fine, put it on a workshop. Uh, one question, or one comment that was made by Ms. Foreman is that we need to read these books to find their literary, literary value. Maybe some of them that's true for, but some of them we don't. All you need to do is read a page or two, and it's just clearly pornography and it needs to go. But some of them aren't like that. But that leads to my second point is number three about, about literary value. And it was an interesting point that you brought up about it's the principal's choice. I have had, uh, some comments made to me, something to the effect of, well, there's just this one little thing in the book and the principal pulled it. But maybe the principal just said, because I've actually looked at, before I, I got on the board, I went to some of the meetings and I looked at some of these books. And they may not be inappropriate, but I just don't think they have any literary value. They're just these kind of comic books that have stream of thought consciousness going through them. And if the principal says, "You know what? That book really doesn't have any literary value. I don't want my, the educators," as Ms. Messenger said, "There's no literary value in this book. It's kind of on the line. Let's just get rid of it." The buck has to stop somewhere. And if the principal wants to make that decision and doesn't want that, I mean, he, he or she has that kind of responsibility. And even if it's questionable, but just says, "You know, this book just really doesn't have any literary value. I don't want to put this." I call it, uh, nonsense literature. That, I don't want to put this stuff in front of my kid's face or, or these students' faces in their brains. That's fine, too, you know? Uh, and, and that goes to my point here, and I wrote this down. A, a public school library is not a public bookstore. All right? It's, it's not, it's not a place where parents have the right to have any book that exists on the planet in that library so that they have access to it. That's not the purpose of a public school library. The purpose of a public school library is to have material in there that is good for the head and good for the hands and good for the heart. And if a principal decides that there's a book that's on the line, or like you said, maybe, maybe a book is brought to him or her and, and he or she looks at it and reads it and goes, "You know, I don't think there's anything objectionable about this, but it's just, it's just nonsense literature. I don't, I don't think it's valuable for our kids' heads and their hands and their hearts to pull it." Just like you said, they buy it, and if they don't like it, they can pull it. So I'm pretty happy with the policy the way that it is. I would like to, maybe one piece of direction that could be given to the principals is to make sure that they aren't pulling things just because, "I don't really have the time to deal with this," you know? Uh, and, and making that point to them and making sure that that's not happening because I wouldn't want that to be happening. But on the other hand, we hire them, we trust them, and at some point, we're just going to have to say, "This is your responsibility." So I'm in favor of moving forward. And if we vote on it, I will be voting in favor of the policy. Thank you.
I, I do, that is a very good point. Like, I, I don't want principals just to pull, and, and you can probably speech that. And Ms. Messenger brought this up, too. We talked about it in the, at least in my briefing. It's like, just because it comes down to the decision of the principal doesn't mean he can't, he or she can't formulate a group, just a, a, and say, "Hey, my assistant principals" or a couple of English teacher, whoever it may be, to help in the decision. I mean, there's no, there's no, uh, in the policy, there's no reason that, that he or she can't do that. Dr. Weisler, did you have something? Then I'll come back to you, Ms.
Yeah, just, just to address, um, uh, Mr. Tatum and, and Chairman, your, your points about, about time. Keep in mind that if the policy is adopted, really, the, when, when the objection comes in, the, the deputy superintendent for instruction is then delegating that review to a principal. And so part of that work is um, ensuring that no one principal has too many of these on their plate. Um, and also, um, you know, you can look at a number of, of factors. What, what certifications the, the various principals hold. Um, th- there's a number of things that, that, um, that can go into that. A- a- and the point of updating the policy to go to a single principal review is that you're not pushing these out to multiple principals to make potentially different decisions on their campuses so that you end up with the situation that one of our speakers spoke at. Here's a book that's okay at some libraries and not at others, right? This is creating uniformity. The other advantage is that because you have that single point of review, we have more time to support that principal in that decision-making. So if they want to have a conversation with our general counsel about the legal standards, there's more time to do that. If they want to have a discussion with the deputy superintendent or the director of secondary curriculum, um, we're, we're, we're funneling and focusing that work. Certainly, if the board chooses to approve, um, the, the, the recommended, uh, policy, um, that at our next principals' meeting, we would talk through with them implementation. And certainly, that will be one of the, um, instructions that Mr. Jensen and I give that we're not, we're, we're not making decisions because we don't have time. Um, and, um, to, to Mr. Cho's point, our, our, our 50 principals, um, shoulder enormous responsibility um, for so many different things. Um, uh, we, we, we believe they, they can handle this. Certainly, the current policy has them handling this. We're just kind of focusing that work.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, I want to, I want to just, um, touch on a few of the things that have been said. Um, first of all, the, the principals having the responsibility, the state statute has given us the responsibility now. It's no longer theirs. Um, and there is nothing in the policy that is putting the onus on us. And I think that that's a problem. Um, we, we, we're not accepting, we're not doing anything. Uh, we're not involved at all on this unless somebody has an appeal. Um, as far as the parents having input, um, Ms. Bray, the, um, the only input parents have under this policy is to file an objection. They do not have a, an ability to defend the book. And, um, that, uh, and I think that was the po- the purpose probably of putting parents on a committee is so that parents would have some input. This, they have zero. Um, and that is, um, that's an antithesis to, uh, to, to parental choice. Um, and I would, and as far as the fear goes, the fear is not that somebody's going to, is, is threatening people that are, that are making these decisions. The fear is the, um, people who work for the district that know the political climate and go, you know, let, let's just err on the side of caution, which has been stated by our, uh, by the DOE. And, uh, so they're, they're making decisions out of fear as well as lack of time. And that's what I want to s- see a way to overcome. Um, I would like to ask what the other board members think about adding the, uh, the statement in the policy that rather than pulling books, our, our preferred outcome would be parental restrictions?
Where would you recommend that get placed?
Uh, I'll find a place in there, but, uh, I think I did. I think I did. I gave, I gave Mr. Jensen a, a place where it would be. But, um, yeah, let me read this again and, and get your take on it. Um, okay. "We recognize parents' rights to determine the materials that their students access. Accordingly..." Hmm?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Accordingly, the preferred outcome is a restriction rather than discontinuing the item. The...
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you, um, can you read that? Are you talking about if a book is deemed to not be?
Well, it's questionable.
So the principal's like, um, "I don't want this," but you still want it to be in the restricted? Is that what you're saying? Or are you?
Somebody wanted it at some point, okay? I mean, it didn't get there by accident. Um, but, and yes, if it's truly egregious, absolutely. But, you know, prepare the report, say, "Yes, this should be withdrawn." I'm not saying that principals can't do that. I'm just wanting it in writing to say that the preferred outcome of the district is a restriction rather than discontinuing the item. Let the parents decide. Not, um, not somebody who doesn't have children in the district filing, filing a complaint. Not, you know, I just, this is so messed up. You know, the deck is stacked against libraries. There's just, um, few ways for books to remain. And, and so many ways that, that, that they can get pulled. And I'm not going to argue whether, or discuss whether they should be pulled or not. Um, that's part of the objection process. But if, and, and we need to make sure that our process addresses that, but also addresses that some people are filing objections that don't read the book, don't have kids in the district, and they're making decisions or objections that are going to affect 50,000 kids. So.
Uh, Ms. Bray, you were led up to speak?
Yeah. And again, I know senior citizens that have read some of these books and were appalled that they were even in our district. Um, I remember a board member saying, I don't know who it was, "Well, I don't want these books to come to us to decide. I'd rather the principals and the staff to make that and then let that go through the process if there's an appeal and all of that, and then come to us as the final result, as a final outcome or whatever." So I just wanted to make that statement. And then, too, um, am I correct in understanding that this new policy, if a book is pulled from one school, it's going to be pulled from the rest of them? I mean, the idea that a book can be in one school, but it's been deemed inappropriate at another school, I think that, that puts too much pressure on other principals, in my opinion. To me, if it's, especially if it's just downright out, just bad, it should be pulled in all schools, not just specific schools.
So the proposed policy revisions
Right.
um, would mean that the reviewing principal, who has ever designated as the reviewing principal, the decision that they make would apply, within the confines of the review process, um, would apply to all schools that have that copy in their collection.
And then, once that decision is made, all principals are notified, I'm guessing that we have a procedure, that principals are notified that this book was reviewed by this principal committee that they appointed. And, and that's the, the thing. We're, we're, we keep pointing to the principal, the principal, the principal. The principal takes advice from their staff and their media specialists and people that are there, parents even. Um, so I don't think it's solely on the principal. I think they're getting, uh, guidance from people that are in their specific school. So, um, okay, I just wanted to clarify that once that decision is made, it's pulled from all of our district schools.
Correct. If the decision was made to either remove or restrict, it would affect the collections at the other schools.
Okay.
It's in the same grade level, right?
Right.
Potentially correct. So like, um, in the proposed policy revisions, there is, you know, I, um, it says that the deputy superintendent may, designate a principal or principals to review. The reason we would designate more than one principal potentially is that if a book was at a high school and a middle school or, you know, at different levels, we'd have, um, a principal representative at each different level review because something that may be age inappropriate for one grade level may be completely appropriate for another grade level.
I know that the staff has put a lot of work into this, uh, policy, and I'm in support of every line of it. Uh, I've read it through and through, and I'm like, "Okay, it could be challenged here, it could be this." But like Ms. Messenger said, it's the political puck. I, I've talked to the people, the political hockey players. And, I told anybody I can put it. Um, and, and it is something that they look at a lot because they get a lot of different opinions from different parts of the state. Seriously, different parts of the states will have a different opinion. Uh, but it's the will of each district to kind of hone in on their specific policy. And I think in, and even when I talk to different school board members at different events, they admire the way we've gone through this process and how we have, uh, made our policy to reflect what the statute was intended for. Is it perfect in some opinions? Is not? In others, it is. I think it's that fair medium that we're there. And again, I don't know that any of these books a teacher has, uh, assigned it for, and, uh, even at that, let me say this. I know in, um, 10 years ago, my granddaughters were given an assignment to read a summer book that was so heavily with sexual content. I had to get the book and highlighted all of the excerpts in the book to their parents to say, "Do you really want your child reading this book?" So they are assigned some of these books in, in the summer school reading program. I hope that that's not happening now, but that's been several years ago. So I just want... So I just wanted to make those other points. I, I'm in support of these policies 100%.
I see no other board member lit up to speak.
So you need a motion to approve?
So we need a, yep, if we want to move on this, we need an emotion to...
You already had a motion in a second.
Yep, we already had a motion in a second.
Okay.
So I see no other board members lit up to speak. So we can go ahead and vote on the approval to amend the school board policy 2520. And that passes four to one with Ms. Foreman as the no on the policy. I am going to, it's 12:07, we missed our bathroom break window. It's also moving to our lunch window. So I'm going to put us on recess for 30 minutes. Let's just say, let's say 12:40, so 33 minutes. So 12:40 where we can meet. Thank you.
All right, welcome back everybody from break. We are in new business item, number 14, new business. Item number three, the approval of the budget amendments for November 2023. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you Chairman, I recommend approval of the budget amendments for November 2023.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm sure Ms. Sellers will want to come up and explain those to us. Thank you.
All right, for the November budget amendments that the district had, there were actually no changes to the budgeted ending fund balance. But within, out of the 474 budget amendments, we had 1,800 chart strings offended. Four of them were over the 1 million mark. They were related to the capital fund, two projects. One was using the local capital improvement funds for the southeast high school science building. 1.2 million, basically moving the expenses from design over to the construction activities. And in regards to the impact fees for the new middle school, we transferred from construction to the design category, 1.6 million. So it was a very quiet month of November.
Thank you. I know you talked about this to us during our briefings. Anybody have any comments or questions today? I don't see anything, nobody's let up on Greenwich, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have our motion and a second on the floor. I do
All right, welcome back everybody from break. We are in new business item, number 14, new business, item number three, the approval of the budget amendments for November 2023. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you Chairman, I recommend approval of the budget amendments for November 2023.
I'm moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm sure Ms. Sellers want to come up and explain those to us, thank you.
All right, for the November budget amendments that the district had, there were actually no changes to the budgeted ending fund balance, but within, out of the 474 budget amendments, we had 1,800 chart strings offended, four of them were over the 1 million mark, they were related to the capital fund, two projects, one was using the local capital improvement funds for the southeast high school science building, 1.2 million, basically moving the expenses from design over to the construction activities, and in regards to the impact fees for the new middle school, we transferred from construction to the design category, 1.6 million. So it was a very quiet month of November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you talked about this to us during our briefings, anybody have any comments or questions today, I don't see anything, nobody's let up on Greenwich, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have our motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendment for November 2023, and that passes five to zero. Item number four under new business, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you Chairman, I recommend approval of the new job description and position of coordinator for Project Edge.
So moved, I'll second.
And Dr. Weisong, will you just, for the public, let us know what this position entails?
Yes, thank you, we are recommending approval of this job description for the purpose of administering the grant that the board approved earlier on the consent agenda, that was item 10.6, the Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program Grant, so this position will be specifically responsible for the management of that $1.1 million grant, and the salary and benefits for the position are paid from that grant, when the grant ends, the position will end. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any board members let up to comment, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the new job description and position of coordinator, Project Edge at MTC, and that passes five to zero. Item number five, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, I recommend approval to use State of Florida Department of Management Services NASPO Value Point Cloud Solutions Agreement Alternate Contract to Purchase Data Center Infrastructure Equipment Installation and Maintenance and Professional Technical Services for Infrastructure and Cybersecurity Solutions.
I'm moved.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, I do see a board member let up to speak, Ms. Spray.
Okay, I was not familiar with what this was all about, so I did schedule a one-on-one with Mr. Hanson to discuss, and I also remember seeing this NASPO in previous agendas back in, gosh, how long ago? Have it here, hang on.
It was a couple of months ago.
Yeah, no, 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 it's been longer than that even, on printers, when we bought all of the printers. What it is, I guess, I have a better understanding that in purchasing, if you ever worked in purchasing, there's power in numbers when you're buying or using contracts all across a corporation, or even in our case, the districts, not only in Florida, but also nationally, you get a better price. So this is, when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, I want to know what this is about, because I'm like, I thought we are going to approve this, but this is for the cloud services and stuff like that. So I did talk to Mr. Hanson about the ERP and the differences between what we have now with PeopleSoft and what we didn't choose was the Skywork. So I went back and looked at a workshop in another district, and they are now looking at the potential of moving to something similar to what this kind of may lead us to, into getting off of that process of writing those checks every month for nearly $100,000 through the, gosh, PeopleSoft program. We're paying over a million dollars a year for that, and I hope this will start leading us over the five-year term to start looking at maybe migrating into getting away from paying that every year, that's a lot of money. This is a $1.5 million over five-year term, I think this is going to start us on that path, and I wanted to, I pulled it so I could have that conversation with the board, that this could potentially save us money in the long run by doing this. And I'm not, I'm always like, if it's a new thing, I think it should be a new business so we could all talk about it, not just go through the superintendent on a lot of things. So this was just one of those things that I wanted to pull to have that whole board conversation on. So, that's how I put it, just so we could have a better understanding. And to, two, the NASPO, I didn't realize it, okay, it's all connected with getting that reduced rates in the things that we use, either software or even hardware. And coming from my background, you always have to refer to your past like you do in the military, I have to go back to my history of being in that room with all of the data in one room, and it's so freezing cold in those rooms because equipment's running and you have to keep it cold, protect it. I mean, however small that was in that environment, we have a whole lot more data that we have to protect and store, so it beats all those boxes, you go to storage solutions. Yeah, so I'm hoping that this was just be one step in migrating away from the PeopleSoft into the Skywork.
All right, thank you very much. I don't have any other board members let up to speak.
Could we have the superintendent address that? My understanding is this is hardware, not software, so.
Address.
It says.
Whether or not this is going to help with Skyward or whatever?
Just a better description of what this is for.
Mr. Hanson?
Oh yeah, do you want to refer to Mr.?
Mr. Hanson is here, he can.
Hanson, go ahead.
Good afternoon everyone, Board Chair, Board Number Superintendent, staff. So this specific item that's before you today is to replace the existing hardware that was originally purchased for our core ERP prior to going live in 2018, obviously before the district went live July 1, 2018 with PeopleSoft, there was hardware procured prior to that to get the district in a position to trans, transition from the then-at-the-time J.D. Edwards software platform to PeopleSoft, and this has been an item that's been noted in our strategic plan and the Capital Technology Plan. At any given time with this particular hardware, very similar to the copiers and the print services, it has an end-of-life expectancy. So we're in a position now where we need to continue to move forward and transition into some newer hardware to support our ERP moving forward, and that's what this particular item is. This specific commodity group also allows for the purchase of cybersecurity solutions, et cetera, and as I've kind of noted before in some brief conversations with some of you, we put that cybersecurity piece in there because there is an existing, last year there was a state grant that the district was eligible to apply for, we did apply for that grant, and oftentimes when grants come out, a lot of times in that question that you have to check boxes for, a lot of times it asks, do you have specific type of approval from the board to purchase types of security solutions? And I felt to kind of leverage this particular NASPO contract with the hardware, go ahead and put that information in there. So if we get an opportunity again to apply for that grant, and the question is, do you have approval for expenditures for these types of solutions, we can at least answer yes. Now, historically, as you know, and we deal in the shade with silent, we have always brought to you any recommendations of cybersecurity solutions that we are going to procure and implement, and that's always covered in those solutions. So this was just that commodity with cloud services allows a wide range of purchases, and we want to be very transparent with you with that commodity group, and that's why we put the cybersecurity language in there as well. But this is really the core equipment in the data center and add resiliency to our existing ERP hardware, along with other hardware that is in due, it's time to replace, because it's reached its end-of-life usefulness for us, to put our core departments in a really good position each day to be productive and efficient in the services they're providing to our staff and students.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I don't see any other board members let to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on item number five, the approval to use the State and Florida Department of Management Services NASPO Value Point Solutions Agreement, and that passes five to zero. Moving on to section number 15, new business, no superintendent recommendation, first item on here is approval of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's 2022 Annual Report. Ms. Spray, did you have anything being the?
Only, only that.
Should we have a motion first?
No, go ahead.
Sure, I would just, I didn't know if she had anything to present.
I do not, I was just going to make some comments.
Okay, well, if any comments, we'll wait till.
Right.
Yep, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the annual report, or I mean, she's not vote?
You make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all right, Ms. Spray?
Okay. There was some errors in the report that was made, I don't know through the committee or, I think it was in transition from one member who was writing a report to the person who was working with the CFOC who left and then transitioned over to the person who was filling in for that support role, that there was some revisions that was lost, and it didn't get into the report, and it did get into the report, and we all thought that this was already on the agenda, it was approved and everything was moving on. Well, after looking back, it looks like it has never been to the board. So it has always been the CFOC mindset that it was already done deal, but when we look back, it was not actually on an agenda. So this is just to clean that up, and it says 2022, and we always work a year behind, so they're working on 2023 moving forward. So I just wanted to, you know, say that the CFOC was under the impression that this has already been done, so I just wanted to clarify that. Other than that, it's just a formality.
Okay, Mr. Tatum?
So that would help explain why we're getting it, what appears to be very late?
Yes.
Okay, but even then, if you look, so this was through June of 22, why does it take them almost nine months to file their report after the end of a fiscal year, is that?
It was actually filed months ago, it just never got on the agenda to approve.
Well, but if you look at the top of the report, it says 20 March 23, so that would be nine months approximately, after June 30 of 22, we didn't get their report until March 20 of 23, so nine months later.
Ms. Sellers can probably help with that.
Yes, so the financial statements also go to the board at the same time, and usually, like, this one's getting ready to go to the board here in January. So last year, that audit report for the financials went to the board in January. So it would usually, a more prudent time would come, like, shortly, like, right after that. So within two months after the board approval of the district's financial statements is usually the gauge to, at least to be able to have that report completed and finished by. So that's a part of the delay, because the audits do occur with the other ones they have. Technically, the district has nine months from the fiscal year-end close to actually have the audit report issued, so that real deadline is March 31, 2023, so district was a little bit early then. So CFOC, at that time, that part was timely completed, it was a lot of other delays that occurred with presentations, things getting moved, because there were some other more important things need to get done, the superintendent's and all that kind of stuff. So that's why we're seeing that late, but as far as March, March 2023, to have that report completed by, is essentially very, a timely report on target.
Because you're waiting, because they're waiting for the end of your financials that come out in January, is that what you said?
Right, usually they are released and come to the board in January.
Great, thank you, thank you for the explanation, that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Messenger?
I just wanted to highlight one thing that was stated in here. It's on the first page, and it's signed by the Chair, the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, and it says, "In addition to the CFOC's review of financial records of the district, the CFOC has reviewed certain data to identify relevant outcomes related to the use of the resolution revenue as herein defined, consistent with the stated goals of the resolution. As illustrated within this report, the district has shown improvement in metrics related to goals set forth in the initiative. This improvement can be attributed to many factors, including implementation of the referendum." I just wanted to make sure that was read into the record, thank you.
Yeah. All right, we, no one other, no other board members are let up to speak, so let us go ahead and vote on the approval of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee 2022 Annual Report, and that is approved five to zero. Item number two, under section 15, new business, approval of the resolution 2023 009, updated school board member residence maps. Ms. Foreman is let up to speak, but board, I just want to make sure we know that this is about the resolution language, and do we support or approve the resolution language, not about do we support or approve the maps that were already voted on and approved. So Ms. Foreman, you're up.
You're no fun, you took it away.
Do we need a motion first, I'm sorry, do we need a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Now Ms. Foreman, sorry, I'm jumping.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm a rebel, I'm gonna, I asked for this to be pulled out of consent agenda, I know that we voted on it, we had a workshop on it, but I just wanted to give you all another opportunity to reconsider, especially in light of a report from League of Women Voters who stated that the county maps appear to be self-serving for the county commission, the school board was observed to use a process that was fair and equitable, and these, fully aware of the blatant unfairness to the citizens of Manatee County, three board members voted to disenfranchise thousands of voters in 2026. We believe there is no justifiable reason for doing this, and it is not in the best interests of the community. So I wanted you all to have another opportunity to decide whether you're going to vote for the self-serving map or for the best interest of the community. That's my passive aggressive.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I interrupt just briefly?
Yep.
The clerk needs to know who made the motion and who made the second.
I made the motion and Ms.
Ms. Spray, second.
Thank you.
Ms. Messenger?
I disagree with the contention that this is anything other than about the maps, because this is how you will formally change the maps. So it is about the maps, not just this resolution, it is, this is the formal mechanism to make that happen, so.
But we already formally voted to.
Yes, this, but that can't go into effect unless this is passed on.
Okay.
So to me, this is still about that, and this is the, this is the way that, this is the mechanism, this is the vehicle by which this board is going to do that. So I really feel like I cannot go without saying a few things. Number one, the county map is less balanced than our map, that is pure data, that is the numbers, it is less balanced. So when we do this, it will be voting for a map that is less balanced than our current map that this board made. And number two, as Mrs. Foreman has stated, whether the League of Women Voters said it or not, I've said it, we've all said it, this map, these maps that we made, this board made, was done in a transparent manner where all of the citizens that had feedback were heard. That cannot be said for this county map, which this board is about to, has already adopted and is now going to move forward with. So, that was it, thank you.
I don't see any other board members let up to speak, so we have a motion, wait a minute, did you press again or you just didn't?
Did you click, did you click the motion?
Oh, do I have to click motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'll do the second, there we go.
Did it go through? I don't see the second went through. So it's there, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, no other board members let up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on item number two, approval of the resolution 2023 009, adopting the school board member residence maps. And that passes three to two with Board Member Choate, Spray, and Tatum being the yeses, the noes being Board Member Messenger and Foreman. Moving on to section number 16, information only, those are year-to-date financials and charter school financials there for you, no more public comments. So moving to updates, instructional update is first. Mr. Jensen, I know you spoke on PM2, do you have anything else that you want to?
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, absolutely, of course.
Thank you Chair, Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. Just a few quick hitters from the instructional departments and schools. We had a tremendous in-service day on January 8th where our teachers got to participate in district-wide professional learning, they were engaged in virtual and in-person training and early literacy, writing across content areas, ESE, ESOL support, building thinking mathematics classrooms, behavior support, all kinds of really wonderful topics that our teachers participated in. Like I said earlier, our PM2 reading testing begins this week, and you'll receive a presentation on the 30th about that. Next week is Celebrate Literacy Week in our schools, and so that event is designed to raise awareness about the importance of reading, to inspire our students and families to make reading part of their routines. This year's theme is Believe in Your Shelf, Building Resiliency Through Reading, and each school submits a plan to the curriculum department outlining all the different activities and events they're doing on their campus aligned to that topic. They have guest readers, literacy dress-up days, writing activities, book talks on the morning announcements, and even older students reading to younger students, it's a really great week in our schools. Our school counselors have started a multi-day training for the use of data in school counseling to improve outcomes in academics, behavior, and post-secondary success, to help finalize our school counseling framework and provide a structure for our school counselors to build programs that maximize their time with students. The county fair is open currently, many of our FFA programs and other school events are happening in January, and I believe tonight is actually, families get free admission if they bring a canned good from 5 to 10 p.m., and we have, I believe, a dairy showcase or something happening during that time as well. And also, finally, congratulations to Parish Community High, who received ASE accreditation, and now students in the automotive program there can earn an ASE industry certification as part of their work. It's a really, really amazing opportunity.
What school is that in?
Parish Community.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Winaldi with Operations.
Been kind of quiet down here.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. A couple of quick things, Human Resources, our operational job fair in December generated 17 candidates for drivers and for. Our operational job fair in December generated seventeen candidates for drivers and for driver aides. At this point right now, we have two drivers and six driver aides that are gonna be starting in the class this upcoming Monday. We're working with the other driver candidates to get them through their initial permitting, so we're hoping to double, if not triple, the number of drivers that we're gonna have in that class. Our next operational job fair is gonna be January twenty-fifth and it's gonna be in-person at Wakeland from nine A.M. to one P.M. Our next instructional job fair is a virtual on the Brazen platform and is scheduled for January eighteenth from nine A.M. to eleven A.M. So we're working, not much of a break as a result of the holidays and all. They, they've been working on job fairs and we've been working to get our candidates certified so we can start getting them trained in transportation. In transportation, I, I'd like to recognize transportation and all of the school teams. Last Tuesday during the wind event that we had, everybody came together. You know, it was the first day back, there, there was a lot of concern and the schools worked hand in glove with transportation. We actually had buses queued up and staged, ready to go. We were watching the wind and, you know, as, as we had the opportunities, we got the children off the campus and we got everyone home safely. The only thing we had is we had one bus that got blown to the side a little bit, hit the curb, and we had a flat tire. So it was, it was a great day. I really appreciate all the support that the schools gave to us as a result of that, too. Presently, FPL has installed twenty of our electrical chargers for our electric buses. So this week, they will be doing their final testing and closeout, so we'll be able, we've been kinda going around and using other municipalities to charge the two buses that we have right now. But we'll be able to charge our own buses and we'll be taking delivery of the additional two buses that we have. So we'll have four electric buses in our fleet, hopefully within the next two to three weeks. Food service, the Food and Nutrition Service celebrated the Manatee County Fair on Thursday, the eleventh, at all secondary schools. The cafeterias were decorated and a special menu was served, including special churros. So if, if you missed that, I'll let you know next time. In addition, the Manatee County Fair Association donated two free tickets to every single one of the secondary schools and they were given to, out to students as well. So we appreciate that. One of the things that Food and Nutrition Service is working on is the USDA Farm-to-School Grant, and that'll be coming to you probably on the thirtieth. And the program is designed to increase the availability of local foods in schools and help connect students to the sources of those food through education, taste tests, school gardens, field trips, and local food sourcing for school meals. So we're gonna be working through that. The Food and Nutrition Service Department is applying for the Edible Garden Turnkey Track, which will give us fifty thousand dollars for four Title I schools as well as increase the efforts at Sugg Middle School and Braden River High Schools. We'll be producing gardens and will be used for the cafeteria as part of the National School Lunch Program. So Food Service is pretty excited about that. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
How many current active bus drivers do we have?
Okay, we, we had a, we, we had a, a, a little bit of a retirement over break. Some decided they weren't gonna come back. And unfortunately, we had a couple individuals take ill as well. So we're right now hovering right around ninety drivers, so we lost about eight drivers. So we do have administrators that are back on the routes again. And we are, whenever we make the transition between semesters, we're taking another look at routes. Some students may have moved and we're going through the route analysis as well, too.
You said we have a couple in training and we're like.
We've got, we've got, right now, out of the candidates that we got in December, we've got two drivers. But the key with the drivers is they have to go to DOT and pull their learning permits. And that, we work with them to make sure they get that in place. And then once they get those permits, then we can train them. We can't train them without the permits.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rinaldi, just, and I was up here when it, that, that afternoon, but thank you, what you, you guys did on Tuesday was fantastic. I mean, and I thought, to everybody, I mean, I thought the communication was great. I mean, as a parent, obviously I got them and stuff, so it was good. So, yeah, thank you. Legal update from either one of the councils?
Not much, not much. I've been keeping the board up to speed with things that are, we've been working on or pending. I'd just remind the board of one, the North River School Site closing is scheduled to occur on or before the end of this month. So that'll, that should be closing within that time period, probably in the next week or two. So the, that's good, been working on that a long time. So that's it.
All right, Superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Chair Choate and Board Members. Today, you approved a consent agenda with twenty-one items. That included one point five million dollars in new grant funding coming into the district for three different projects along with just a, 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 other routine business. So thank you for your support of the consent agenda. Want to echo Mr. Rinaldi's compliments to the whole team for the performance during the inclement weather last week on Tuesday. Because of the nature of, of that storm, it was more challenging to set a standard and a, and a set of rules that applied to everybody. And so we really authorized our principals to make decisions at dismissal based on what was happening, you know, in their community. And, and the principals did a great job. Also want to thank Paul D'Amico, our Executive Director, for safety and security. He was in regular contact with the National Weather Service at points where things maybe looked a little bit bumpy or in specific places. And we got great guidance there. So it does take the whole team to make things work on tough weather days. And finally, we, we thank all of our parents for their patience because we, we know lots of other things are happening. And as a team, we always want to be open for business and efficient to serve the community. So this past weekend, very proud of our students for being civically engaged in a variety of activities around Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. We had students who participated in an oratorical contest held at the Palmetto Youth Center. And the winners from all three levels, elementary, middle, and high, were recognized last Friday evening at the annual banquet. And thank you to board members who were able to attend that event and congratulate our student winners. We also, of course, had the color guard from Palmetto High at that event. And it was great to see those students. And then at the parade on Saturday morning, all of our high schools were engaged between the marching bands and the ROTCs. And that was with several other events going on in the community. So very proud of our high schools for, for stepping up and representing the school district and celebrating and commemorating the weekend. Board members, as Chair Choate said, we got a little bit of a break over the holidays, but we're getting into the full swing. We have a workshop next Tuesday, January twenty-third, followed by master board training on Thursday, January twenty-fifth. That is scheduled to be our last session with Ms. Cook from FSBA. And then, of course, we're two weeks out from our January thirtieth board meeting. I assure you, Mr. Rinaldi will be very busy at that meeting based on the agenda and how it's shaping up. So he'll be at the podium a little bit more. I, I am anticipating a heavier agenda there, so just a heads up for your calendar planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For our board comments, I've got Tatum, Foreman, Messenger, Spray, Choate. So Mr. Tatum, you can lead us all.
Yes, good afternoon. So I too wanted to echo the leadership example and the great leadership job that was done during that weather event. I know in the, in the aviation world, the best pilots are not necessarily the ones that have the best stick and rudder skills, but they're the ones who can exercise the best judgment and good judgment in difficult and situations where factors are changing quickly and that's what happens. So apparently, we have some good leaders at our schools and some good leaders in our district. We did that safely and everybody got home safe. So congratulations on a good leadership example, so outstanding job there. I also wanted to bring up with the migrant tea ladies. I've talked to some groups lately and as a New Year's resolution, I thought maybe all of us, and maybe some of us already do, but pick one organization in town in the community that we want to support with our time and our energy. And if we have a few extra cents, maybe that, too. Because really, we'd all like to solve world hunger and we'd all like to find a cure for cancer, but most of us won't get the opportunity to do that in life. But we can make a difference in what Voltaire called our own little garden here, right? So I've kind of invested and felt feeding empty little tummies. But whatever the thing is that floats your boat in the community, there are lots and lots of nonprofit organizations that can use our help, veterans organizations, pregnancy clinics and things like that. So make it a New Year's resolution for all of us to pick one and invest in it if we can. And my safety tip for the day is, as we were talking about traveling tomorrow, I would like us to, I don't know what our policy is on travel, but there's a meeting at one-thirty tomorrow afternoon in Tallahassee. And it would be, I, I think it's not the most prudent and safe plan to have people driving in the morning for six or seven hours and then having, try to make it to that meeting, especially if the weather's bad going through Tampa. So do we have a, a policy that says we can't travel the day prior if the meeting starts before noon or something? Do we, okay. Just, I mean, I know we're trying to save, go ahead. I, I know we'd like to, if it was in Tampa or even Orlando or even Gainesville, I would be okay. But, you know, for us to make, make it to our one-thirty meeting, it's, I did, I did the Google map. It's about a five and a half hour drive from my house. That's without stopping, should probably stop twice. We might want to consider getting us up there the day prior, just for safety reasons. That's a, that's a long drive and we don't want, we don't want people rushing through the rain and storms and stuff like that. So that's my safety tip request, and that would apply to other employees of the district, too. You know, if they have a meeting, let's say in Miami, you know, at noon or something, I think we should get them down there the day prior rather than having to try to fight through four or five hours of traffic to get to their meeting or something, so. And those are the end of my board comments, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, just want to thank you all for good discussion, courtesy. I think we're not gonna agree on things, obviously, but, and in, today I walk away from this board pretty discouraged, but, because I, I, I strongly feel that we voted against parent choice and that we have disenfranchised voters in the future and that, that, just, you know, so, all right. And then, but on a happy note, something wonderful happened over at the county commission. And that was the, the all-access pass. They, they had voted to change the circulation policy where the all-access would be automatically a parent choi, a parent choice card. And they have modified that to read that it will align with the interlocal agreement. And they passed that, so. So I, I'm, I, I'm very happy with that. And later on, I think we need to figure out what, how we're going to implement what the, what the interlocal agreement says, so. And that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messenger.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about a couple things. Number one, go to the fair. Number two, I got to go to the grand opening of the library for Lakewood Ranch. It was, it's a beautiful building. I did not go inside because there was just masses of people, so. But I got to go to the event and it was, it seems like it's really exciting and it's not far from my house, so I will definitely go, probably a lot. And Mr. Chapman was there, too, representing the district, so that was really good. I want to make sure I note that, that he was also there. I also thankfully was invited to go to the social studies curriculum selection, the final decision, the final meeting for that. I went to that, so I really wanted to thank you guys for including me in that. It's, I, I, I'll always look for opportunities where I can learn something new and that was an opportunity for me to learn something new, just sitting in and hearing the conversations and being, you know, I'm not, had no say in any of it, but at least hearing the pros and the cons and hearing it discussed helps me understand that process better. So I think that makes me a better board member, so I really appreciate that opportunity to be able to do that. I felt like that at construction, too, when I started to get in, invited to go into construction, when the interviews and those, I learned a lot. And so anytime I can find new ways to learn something new in this job, I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to reiterate that and I'm looking forward to science. And then there was a mention about the middle school site in the North River Ranch area. And I refuse to call it North River Middle School. I've heard people call it that, but we're, it's in, it's in the North River Ranch area. Anyway, we have not named it yet. And I just wanted to, to, and I said this during my board briefing, but I haven't said it to the board. And I, I can't imagine, you all like to drive around in Parish. But I do, because that's where I live. And there is now, the roads are now built and open that are surrounding. If you recall, Fort Hamer had not been completed up to the site and there was going to be a road that was perpendicular to Fort Hamer that the school was gonna come off of. That road that's perpendicular has been built and so has Fort Hamer. Not to the northern piece yet, but at least the southern piece, which is what we had talked about, is now complete as well as Fort Hamer up to that piece of land. So I just wanted to highlight that so you guys know that because I can't imagine you want to drive all the way out there. But just so you know, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spray.
And now officially, I can say, item eight from the previous agenda, donation of the Lincoln vehicle was flooded and was given to MTC as a project to work on. That vehicle will not be plated, tagged, or insured for anybody to use in the district. Now it's official, right? Okay. Tomorrow will be my second trip to Tallahassee. So the first one, I was able to leave early and spend time with my granddaughter up in Land O' Lakes. This time, I won't be able to do that. Need to look at my agenda more, I probably should have planned it a little better. And then I did go to the Palmetto Youth Center for the MLK banquet. It was a very nice event, I thought they'd done a great job. We had to get our water, but we did. We, we managed through it, drank our melted ice, it was fine. It was a very good attended event. And the fair, I want to say that at that Palmetto event, Mr. Edwards was so proud to show me the pictures of the space that we are occupying on the north end of Veterans Hall for anyone interested in becoming a member of the school district family and either bus driver, custodian, teacher, and/or anything else that we have posted online. Feel free to visit the fair and fill out application, we're gladly take it. And then two, my quote of the year is be kind to those who can't. Some people just have it in their DNA not to look at the positive side of things. I always try to look at a positive side, even when I disagree. I still try to look at the positive side of their opinions. And I think that's just about it. I want to thank the staff. We're on to twenty-twenty-four already, it's just, doesn't seem possible. But I think we're gonna end up strong. And just look forward to seeing you all in Tallahassee tomorrow, for those of you who are going. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for a great meeting, the, to staff, thank you for putting this stuff together. And I love that Dr. Weisong, that you recap what was in the consent items every time under your remarks. I really do enjoy that because obviously they're consent items, we kind of go over them and you explain to us in our briefings. But I think it's important that, that's where the bulk of the business of the district is done, where contracts are approved and things are approved by, and programs. And so I do appreciate you doing that, that's something that's, that's new. And, and I do appreciate that. All the other staff, y'all work hard, I know, and, and thank you very much. Hopefully, everybody had a great holiday, little break there. Seems like it goes really fast and you get back into it, it's hard to get going. But twenty-twenty-four is here and I'm excited. Mr. Jensen, thank you again and all the, all, everybody out there that's a part of the data collecting and gathering, putting it together for all of our PM one, PM two. the data collecting and gathering, putting it together for all of our PM one, PM two, for math, for science, for, for reading, that's important. It's really important for not only the district, but really the teachers who are obviously on the, in the classroom with the kids, to know who needs what and what kind of help, and it wouldn't be there if we didn't do the data, right? And you got to compile all of it, you got to put it in, into spreadsheets, etc., so really, really appreciate that and what the team does. So with that, we are adjourned, and safe travels for those going to Tallahassee, and we'll see you next week for our workshop on Tuesday.